Good evening, everyone. This is the Monday, June 7th, regular city council meeting for the city of Bel Air Beach. Please rise, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the people of this city, to the citizens of Bel Air Beach, to the citizens of Bel Air Beach, to the citizens of all.
Adam Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Robinaki, here. Councilmember Frank Baker, here. Councilmember Lynn Gunn, here. Councilmember Leslie Hunter, here. Councilmember Louis Swope, here. Vice Mayor Dave Gannis, here. Mayor Joseph Mando, here. City Manager Lynn Reeves, here. And City Attorney Fred Riley, here.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Somebody.
I got a tie here. Frank Baker called, have the motion. Leslie Hunter, second. Discussion. Frank? No? Leslie? I have two, uh, two, three items. Number five, I'd like to move to the regular. I have one brief addition to that. Number eight or nine, I'd like to move to a, um, a work session. I believe there's a lot of discussion to be done on item eight and some discussion on item nine. I'll entertain a motion if anyone else feels that way. If not, it's gonna be a long night, I promise you. A motion? Approval of the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? I'll be opposed. So it's seven to, uh, six to one. And Patty, um, well, okay. In the minutes, we are not showing the dissenting votes. That was my problem with them. So this is a six to one, and it should reflect who's dissenting. That's my only problem, because if not, it's lost. Um, citizen comments. We have three minutes for any citizen who would like to come up and speak with us. You come up over here to the podium. Um, please give your name and address. Also, you have, uh, three minutes. If you need more time, then you need somebody to give you some more time. You can get up to 12 minutes, and people will give it to you. Anything that's on the agenda, we're gonna have time for citizen comments during each one of those items. So don't come up and speak on that, or we're gonna have to ask you to come up, you know, come back later. But if it's something not on the agenda and you wish to speak with us on, please come right up here. Okay? Anyone like to speak for the council? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Yoli Rodeiro, and I live on 113 12th Street. And I'll have, I think, my husband's three minutes and Harry Gray's three minutes to help me out if I shouldn't.
Hang on one second, Ms. Rodeiro. Is that acceptable, three minutes from the two individuals? So we have nine minutes, Patty?
Okay.
Please proceed.
Uh, good evening. I have, uh, two, um, primary issues that I'd like to just bring to your attention. Uh, my first one is the parking situation of the access lots. And, um, if we can remember and think back, um, those lots are lots 21, 43, and 66, which is the 12th Street, the 19th, and I think the 6th Lot. In reading the Bel Air Shore ordinance, this is Bel Air Shore, not our ordinance, it states that only and only Bel Air Beach can issue parking permits for those access lots. And this is set ordinance 30-57. And Bel Air Shore has now been in the habit for the last two, three months now of issuing their own letter or quasi-parking permit for whatever cars that they feel they want to allow to park in those lots. This is a false part-permit in violation of their own ordinance. Further, ordinance 46-139-3 says that there will not be any recreational or commercial vehicles in those access lots. Well, again, Bel Air Shore is allowing commercial lot, uh, park vehicles to park in those lots. More specifically, uh, trucks and vans and forklifts and the construction on the 12th Street home of the Rodriguez House on the corner, as well as Commissioner Bloom's landscaper can park in the side of the access lot, and his own mechanical business, kind of trucks are allowed to park in the lot. So now there's a second ordinance that Bel Air Shore is violating. And the reason my husband and I purchased here instead of Indian Rocks or, um, Madre, excuse me, Madeira or anywhere else was that we could walk right across the street, and we have our beach right there. I won't go into the rest of the ordinance, because right now my concern is this parking situation. But it is the driving force for us, for our property values and for our property rights. Per the inter-local agreement, Bel Air Beach is responsible, I believe, for all the wear and tear, any repairs, any maintenance of the parking lot, the sand dunes, the rails, et cetera. Yet, commercial trucks parking in these lots cause extra wear and tear on the flats, can cause more damage, and yet who will be responsible for the repairs? We will. What is being done to address this issue? And this I ask the council members, because obviously, we, I can't do anything. Something needs to be done. A few weeks ago, the Pinellas Film Company obtained permission from Bel Air Shore to park close to 50, 60 cars in lots 43 and 66, practically filling 66 completely and half of 43. They parked vans and cars and trucks to film a private home. Again, illegal parking permits by Bel Air Shore were issued. The sheriff did absolutely nothing, even though they were called. And Bel Air Beach failed to take any active control of the situation. The final issue with the parking lot is liability. It is my understanding that recently, Bel Air Beach insurance company settled a certain flaw that happened at one of the access lots. That means that any injuries that occur there is our responsibility. Where they're going to look to us to sue us. Any car that gets damaged, a wall that gets broken, or a child that runs in front of a commercial truck and gets run over because they can't be seen. Again, parking permits by Bel Air Shore will be meaningless, because the person, the entity responsible for that liability will be Bel Air Beach. Again, something must be done. That is my primary concern. The other concern is the sheriff's relationship, which I think Deborah Mall spoke to last meeting. The, uh, relationship between the sheriff, Bel Air Beach, and Bel Air Shore in the sense of our mutual law enforcement. I would like to request a copy, and please let me know how, who to address my request to, of that, excuse me, that agreement, that indicates what are the percentages between Bel Air Shore, Bel Air Beach, and the sheriff, to see how they compare in the sense of use and payment. Um, I'm personally disappointed with the sheriff's office for selective enforcement. I listened to the Bel Air Shore meetings, and on two separate occasions, I heard Regina Kardashian, their legal counsel, one that helped write the ordinance, tell them that the ordinance applied to the entire beach, their property and below the mean high water line. And that if it wasn't like that, it would be a legal protection thing. Well, the sheriff's department is not choosing to enforce that. The property that belongs to the homeowners is, can be used at will with anything, but the rest of the prop, uh, residents, which of course it's us, are harassed. Um, as a resident of Bel Air Beach, I expect this council to act to preserve my property rights and my privileges. So I would ask, how are you doing this? And specifically, in the parking situation at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we talk back?
We typically don't. We can do it at the end unless council wishes to address it. I mean, I mean, does council probably answer anything? I, I will just ask Patty, that can be considered a public records request from what you just asked for a copy of the lease agreement? Was that a public records request?
Yes, and I said, if you're legal, you're allowed.
Okay. No, that's sufficient. What you just gave is a public records request. Council, if you wish to speak. Just, let me first go, yes, or?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, okay. I'm not going to speak on this, folks.
I just mentioned stuff as you were talking, and I didn't want to interrupt you with point of order or anything like that, uh, which I think you should, but anyway, just going back to what you were saying. What is the, my question is, what is the rule of law on parking in that interlocal agreements? Okay? Um, I really would like to know. Because last night, just last night, there were three illegal cars parked between 6 o'clock and 7 o'clock at 12th Street. And we walk the beach all the time, and I bet you can leave right now, find at least three illegal cars parked in those two lots, okay? Commercial parking, gross weight of these vehicles are five times sometimes more than a car. They can tear up the policy. Okay? Who repairs them? Us. Where do we get the money to repair? We used to get the money from tickets, and the residents, of course. But we stopped taking it. If I'm not correct in anything I said, please someone.
I can say a lot, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna run this discussion. I, I almost said, so I can't say.
Councilmember Baker, I'd like to go ahead and pop in on a couple of those things. Um, since the property is owned by Bel Air Shore, they direct the sheriff's department, and as part of the interlocal agreement, you know, it's spelled out in there. And I'm not even sure why they issue permits to begin with on their own property. But as far as, you know, the vehicles being parked in there, that is totally up to the sheriff's department to ticket them, that we don't have any control, it's not our city. I mean, I'm not even sure why we're discussing Bel Air Shore to begin with. But as far as some of these commercial vehicles, I applaud the town of Bel Air Shore for allowing the Pinellas County Film Festival in there, as, because they also involved the NFL Live, DSP and Live Cruise, because it was for Tom Brady, a Super Bowl champion of this state. I mean, what community would not have allowed that? I mean, Tom Brady and Charles Woodson was both there. So I really encourage people to get some background information before they start saying something. Does Bel Air Beach want to be the city that says Tom Brady and his crew are not allowed? I mean, seriously, where, the lines being drawn so ridiculously anymore is just crazy. Yeah, I agree there's cars parked in there with no stickers on them. And some of them are even the Bel Air Beach residents that park there, because they don't want to come up here and bother getting a sticker. I get that. And I know you can leave right now and go and find some there parked. It's that way all the time. I mean, but we also have to be neighborly. We've gotta respect our other communities. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm appalled that the whole Pinellas County film thing was even brought up tonight. I mean, my gosh. Who would turn down Tom Brady? I mean, seriously, who?
May I?
No, no, yeah, actually, there's just one. So if somebody else wants to rebut, that's fine, but, um, let's, let's, let's just, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Council has to make a speak. Let's let council speak. I will call for more citizens to speak up, okay? But Ms. Rodeiro, you go, you had nine minutes, and that's it, so it's not a back and forth, so. Actually, this is rare, what we're doing, but it was kind of a special thing. I'm back over to council. I'm just running the discussion.
We're going, we're going back, and I'm talking about commercial parking. I'm not talking about the film fest or whatever it was done. I'm, I'm talking about the daily party at 6th Street and 12th, right? Like, commercial vehicles. You bring up who's responsible for injury. Well, number four, the interlocal agreement says we are. I mean, it's clean and cut. So if anybody gets injured, we're responsible for it. The sheriff, your question on the sheriff, everything should be timed and coordinated with that. So it shouldn't be hard to find out if they're truly spending 15 minutes a shift. I believe their shifts are 12 hours, I mean, maybe longer, let's prove them there right now to answer that. And the ordinance that was brought up about them controlling the whole beach to the water, I refer to the state constitution, Article 10 sexual law. I refer to the public trust law, alright? Clearly says, that land is owned by the state, which we are part of the state. I'm hoping to answer your questions.
Thank you.
To respond to part of what Rita said, to me, and maybe I'm black and white, I guess, but if an ordinance says you are not allowed to park there, that you are not allowed to give an order, or a parking sticker, I don't care if it's Tom Brady, Joe Biden, Donald Trump, or me. Tom Brady, yes, he's a great football player, but you know what? I'm a doctor, I say blood, Tommy Wiseau says. So may, maybe I should have a film about me and how awesome I am, but my video trucks there, because I'm sure everybody would love to see that video. I'll go. But you get the point. He's no better than I am, he's no better than anybody. I don't care who it is. Rules are rules. Tom Brady breaks a rule, if he goes and murders somebody, he should get arrested. If he speeds, he should get a traffic ticket. So I don't care who filmed it, I think that's ridiculous. Second of all, you know, I saw these parking lots filled, and I, you know, emailed Lynn, and I was like, what the heck is going on? So yes, I think the city does need to sit here and say what is allowed and what's not allowed, and stand by it. We can't do, here are the rules, but if Tommy Boy comes over and he wants to film something, it's okay, because it's Tom. No. It's, I don't care if you're Bel Air Beach, I don't care if you're Bel Air Shore. Everybody follows the rules. Again, this, I mean, this is like going back to middle school. There is no teacher's pet, there's no bully, we all just follow the rules. So I don't know as a city how we can make that happen, other than here's an ordinance, follow the rules. And if I'm not mistaken, there's already an ordinance, so why are we following the rules? That's it.
Council, come on down.
Only, I only two boxes for a living, but I did stay on holiday next Christmas. I think if you go back and you look at the state constitution, it talks about access for the public. And I think one of the good things that's gonna come out of all of the litigation that's going on is we're gonna finally get some detailed interpretations of how this is always going to be interpreted. The unfortunate part of this is, we're asking questions we may not want to hear the answers to, but you're gonna get a definitive answer to this, and rather than go back and forth with, this is my interpretation, I read, uh, William Walker, uh, Mr. Dr. Google is your favorite, I think. Dr. Google. I think it's gonna be resolved. So let's see what happens. I think we'll just sit back, waiting for the, uh, legal process to take its course.
Council, anything more? I open the floor back up to the citizens. John Hanzick.
John Hanzick, 22nd Street. I was actually not gonna say anything tonight, but this discussion just kinda set me off. So I wanna dovetail on some comments that have been made regarding the parking. We have ordinances. There are signs clearly posted at these parking lots that tell you who is authorized to park there and what's required. And again, to quote a council person, it's black and white. Bel Air Beach residents, decal required. Now, if I was law enforcement, there's no interpretation. It's black and white. And you don't spend your time perusing the beach to find the violator. You see a vehicle that doesn't have a decal, you write a ticket. Sorry about that. Pay a fine. Spend five bucks or whatever for the decal, if you're a resident of Bel Air Beach. It's a cut and line. Rules are rules. You can interpret gray in some of them, others, it's black and white. Discretion, there are time, there are times and situations for it. But when it tells you plain as day, what is and what isn't, it is not open for interpretation or discretion. And you take an oath to uphold that. I certainly did for 24 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzick. Gentlemen in the back, pusher.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Richard Haggard, 119 9th Street. Uh, my wife and I have only lived here for just over a year, so I'm relatively new to the area. I retired after 30 years of service in the army, and took a job after retirement so that my wife and I could afford to live in, uh, an area as pristine with private beaches like Bel Air Beach. And that was a choice that we made. Uh, several months ago, when my wife and I were approached by a sheriff because of, well, we had umbrella on the beach, and I'll say that the sheriff was completely professional about it. We had a great conversation. I was very taken aback that there's actually an ordinance in the state of Florida preventing an umbrella. So that sent me on a course of study, and I've read deeds, interlocal agreements, minutes from previous sessions, Florida statutes, municipal codes, talked to council members, lawyers, and I don't claim to be an expert in any of that, so I don't know what'll come out. But a comment that you made, ma'am, with all due respect about being neighborly, in all of my, albeit short, investigation, I still can't find a single instance where Bel Air Shore is being neighborly back. I see situations where our parking, at least my interpretation of it, seems to be taken advantage of. I see situations where my health and my happiness is being exchanged by atheists who don't want to ruin their view. And I see a whole host of other areas, so I don't quite see where the neighborly is coming in. And although I'm not a lawyer, having spent 30 years in a lot of countries in the middle of a lot of conflicts, I think I am an expert when I tell you I know exactly what it looks like when the big guy picks on the little guy. And I know that in every country and in every culture, that doesn't stop until the little guy makes a stand, and I do even, upon draws a line in the sink. So I know, speaking for myself, I did spend 30 years fighting tyranny so that I can be bullied by a bunch of atheists who don't want to ruin their view of the beach. And I'm deeply troubled by all of these situations that I seem to have found myself in when we moved here. Um, we're also building a house right down the street in Bel Air Beach, so we intended on spending all of our golden years, which is why I'm here, and which is why I'm always gonna be vocal on this issue. I'll continue reading, I'll continue getting myself educated, I'll continue to fight, because in this case, again, I don't see where the neighborly is coming in. And if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. And, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your service to this country.
So following along with what's been happening with Bel Air Shore, when he's building his house, he should be able to park his mini-construction vehicles in the parking lot. So that's good news for you, right? Just saying, black, white.
Citizens? Ms. Vanzcoy?
Ms. Vanzcoy, 7th Street. First of all, the last time I checked, everyone that was on this board was voted on by the citizens of this city, not Bel Air Shore. And we should, you should be doing everything you can to back these citizens, not those citizens, upholding our laws, our rights, not other cities' rights. Okay? Second of all, commercial vehicles. I don't know if you know anything about construction, but I know the city manager does. Anytime you take a vehicle with any amount of weight, I mean, they go to gross vehicle weight, okay, the stress of asphalt, there's a different grades in a parking lot that are applied. Those parking lots are not set up for commercial vehicles. There has been damage already done in the corner of, I believe that is 12th Street's parking lot at this end, okay? Whether or not it was done by these vehicles, I don't know, but there has been damage done. But those, those parking lots are not made for commercial vehicles at all. Second of all, we had a cancer patient ask for a temporary, temporary pass to park there, and they were turned down. But yet, we can turn starstruck fans parking lots open for them. I mean, come on. A cancer patient doesn't have any more rights than some, some superstar? He could, he could actually have a limo take him down and drop him off. He's a multimillionaire. Why are we granting those kinds of things? Third of all, the city manager offered that same group parking here for a fee, and it took revenue away from this city. And I don't know if you council members are aware of that. He did try to talk to them about that. So we have lost revenue on it. That's 30 vehicles, three days. Think about what we charge to park, how much money we've missed out on the city. But yet, we took on the liability in those parking lots for those vehicles. Worst, worst thing we ever did was sign that interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members?
Yeah, um, I agree with you. Uh, we do need to look at the interlocal agreement, and maybe just go ahead and give our 60 days and back out of it. We are granted access, not ownership to that property, so, I mean, I hear so many people complaining about the interlocal agreement, so maybe that's what we should think about doing as a city, is just putting in our 60 days. We don't have to give them any reason. They have the same rights as we do. And I do realize that we're all up here because of citizens. And I also understand that, you know, everything should be black and white. But yet, when the previous parking record was holding events, they wanted to open up parking, and they did, on the first private streets. We have the parking ordinance. Nobody cared about that parking ordinance at the time. We didn't lose any revenue, because it wasn't our event over there that happened. It was their event, so we lost no revenue. Yes, the city manager offered them our parking lot, but it was their event, so, I mean, I don't know why we keep having to talk about the town of Bel Air Shore. And being neighborly involves many different things. I mean, but you guys are sitting here, and you're talking about you want out of the interlocal agreement. I understand people are tired of us breaking the beach. Well, we can quit breaking the beach, cancel the interlocal agreement. People are concerned about the sheriff, sheriff's service. We can cancel that. Our budget will go up $36,000 a year for the sheriff's department. So, I mean, what are you guys looking for? You looking for our expenses to continue to increase for Bel Air Beach residents, not having parking over there at all? I mean, all granted is access. We're not granted, if we cancel that interlocal, we're not granted any parking. Does everybody totally understand that? I am looking out for the Bel Air Beach residents. But it's just getting to the point where you guys are wanting so much, and you don't realize that there is a downfall to all of that. I mean, you're asking for more than I think you're gonna ever realize that you're gonna get if we keep going down this path.
I'd like to make a correction also. Uh, we did not welcome a film crew with open arms. They came, they asked, they went elsewhere. We did not give them permission, that, that was, we didn't do that. So to say that this council is welcoming people in with open arms is totally wrong, very much incorrect.
If we cancel, maybe this is a question for the solicitor. If we cancel the interlocal agreement, does it take us back to the, I'm trying to pronounce it wrong, the name, from 1944 up to 1970? Because that's a command that was given to us, those three lots, and the way I read it is forever. The second part is, it's more like a trust. In Florida, as a trustee, you cannot lay a dime as being a trustee. It's, it's a written statute, it's clean and cut. So where would canceling this interlocal agreement get us? Listen, can you comment on that?
Um, the first comment I'll make is on the, the city attorney, and I'm licensed in Florida as a Florida attorney. I'm also an English solicitor, so I'm glad you.
Your name is McQueen.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you break that out, that it's not relevant, but you can call me that if you want. Um, I wanna address a number of things that have been said. I've been waiting patiently, um, for the opportunity to do this. The council needs the opportunity to hear from the citizens, and also to discuss things amongst themselves, and, um, to answer, try to answer some of the questions. The things I want to tell you is, are fact-based, and they're, in some ways, you'll probably conclude these are superficial comments. They're not. They're the initial things that are fact-based, that everybody in the room needs to know before you start into, uh, considering other things. Several facts. There are a couple deeds, and the deeds create a trust relationship, and the deeds are very lengthy. They're also written decades ago, and the interpretation of the deeds is. lengthy, they're also written decades ago, and the interpretation of the deeds is of course of question, um, at this point in time. The deeds, in simplistic terms, create a trust relationship for the benefit of the citizens of Bel Air Beach with respect to the beach access lots. So that, that's the foundation of everything. In addition to that, there are, is a interlocal agreement that I have certainly read, although it's been several, actually several weeks ago since I last looked at it. The interlocal agreement is, I want to say it's about twenty years old, somewhere in that neighborhood, so it's, it's not a recent thing. I don't think anybody on this council had anything to do with that interlocal agreement. Um, it's a, uh, like any interlocal agreement between two municipalities, it can be terminated, it can also be amended, so if there's a, uh, the other party's willing, this city can always initiate the process to try and amend it in some way if that's desirable. Having said those two foundational points, there are also city code provisions in Bel Air Beach and city code provisions in Bel Air Shore that relate to the access lots. The lady that spoke, and I, is your name, Mrs. Rivera?
Rivera.
Rivera, okay. You, you mentioned that the specific statute sections, I, I don't have that in front of me, although, um, several, probably two months ago, I did look at those. I pulled up the Bel Air Shore, uh, code ordinances and read those specific code provisions, and if Bel Air Shore is not complying with their code provisions, then Bel Air Shore is the one that has jurisdiction over their code provisions, and if you feel that they're not in compliance, then I, I would recommend to you that that be the starting point with, is contacting Bel Air Shore to ask why they are not complying with their own code provisions. And so that, that's another thing that I would, would say is a, you know, factual thing. It's important to delineate the, who has jurisdiction. Uh, the city of Bel Air Beach, arguably, uh, and I will say very much arguably, does not have jurisdiction unless it's a component of the interlocal agreement to demand that they, Bel Air Shore, follow their own code provisions, so that, I would recommend you consider that. I am also aware of a lawsuit that is, has been filed. It's, the lawsuit initially, um, related to the umbrella ordinance that the, the city of Bel Air Shore enacted, and that ordinance was, has been, uh, was challenged by citizens of Bel Air Beach, and I'm aware of the lawsuit. I, uh, the, the city of Bel Air Beach has not, is not a party to that lawsuit as of this moment in time, and the citizens who brought the lawsuit are litigating that, and other than knowing that it exists and knowing that it's being litigated, I'm, I'm really not that dialed in to all the specifics of that case, and I, the appropriate answer for me to say is, I'm aware it exists, I don't know that much about it, and, um, I hope the court system or the judge that has that case ultimately reaches a resolution which is consistent with the law. Several people mentioned the rule of law, and that is what should be applied across the board. Um, the, you know, if, if they're, they're not complying with the law, then you should raise an issue with them about not complying with the law. The, you know, the issue being brought up, I'm not sorry it's being brought up, I've heard personally about it for weeks, that there's a, a lot of dissension in the, the community about it. I, I will say, I would fully expect, because in the era we live in, there's a lot of stuff on social media, some of which may be accurate, some of which may not be accurate, that also causes trouble with the community because it's hard to figure out which, what is accurate and what isn't. But the, uh, I, I know this is a hot-button issue with many people, and, um, you know, I, I hope there is ultimately a resolution of it in the, the appropriate forum, and the resolution is, is reached in the not-so-distant future. How long it takes, I have no clue, because I'm not really, uh, privy to the, the status of the litigation. So, you know, that, that's, I hope a fact-based explanation of a lot of things. If the city council wants to consider, you, you have another thing, number of things you can consider. Um, if you want to consider joining the lawsuit for some reason, then the city council can consider that. If the city council wants to consider, um, either amending or terminating the interlocal, interlocal agreement, that's something that you sure, certainly could, uh, consider. No matter what you're going to do, and I'm now talking directly to the city council, the appropriate thing for you to do is be fully informed and have all the cards on the table, and the cards on the table are the underlying trust documents, the current version of the interlocal agreement, the statutes, and it would be helpful if you were going to make any decision about joining, joining the lawsuit for, for you to consider what, what the arguments are in the lawsuit, so I would suggest that be something that you, you consider. My job is to try and, uh, in working with the city manager and working with the city council, is to try and shield the city from liability from all sorts of different angles, and, you know, my job is to, uh, I joke about this with the people, the other city that I represent, my job has morphed over the time period that I've done this. I've been a lawyer for thirty-four years. It is a lot, a lot more risk management today than it has ever been. That's what a lawyer is trying to do, and risk management to me is not getting a, the city in a lawsuit that will cost the taxpayers a, a lot of money unless there's a very compelling reason for the city to get into the lawsuit. That's a decision that ultimately would need to be made by the city council, and all I suggest is that if the city council wants to consider that or consider a modification in some way to the interlocal agreement, then you have a meeting where all those things have been provided in advance, and y'all can discuss it with everybody having, being fully informed and having all the relevant information in front of you.
Well, again, canceling the interlocal agreement, would that still keep those three lots open to us? Because you said it's a trust. So, we don't want to lose those lots, that's the most important thing. Um, I don't understand how all of a sudden, just, you know, last year or two, then we gave up the rights to rent tickets. Um, I was on council then, but we lost that revenue. Um, so again, canceling that interlocal agreement. Because you say we're not part of this lawsuit, number four of the interlocal agreement says the real property owners are responsible for damages in the interlocal agreement, so it's not going to sue us all individually, it's going to sue us by the town. Is that correct?
The, the city has an indemnification provision in the interlocal agreement, and I'm not trying to dodge questions, I'm trying to be responsible.
I'm just trying to get educated the best I can to serve these people that like to rule something, whatever, to serve them, uh, and I want to do the best interest of everybody, including myself. So canceling the interlocal agreement, where does that leave us?
I wouldn't encourage you to cancel it as a, as a reactionary thing. I'd encourage you to schedule either a, a work, ideally a workshop session to have it in everybody's hands and to review what the interlocal agreement says, and then review whether it's time for some kind of modification or change. I, I don't think it's a good idea for me to give a direct response to what happens if we cancel it. I would feel much better giving that response after everybody had it in front of them.
These are, these are very complex issues, and there are a lot of fine nuances that,
unfortunately, what happens is we all start studying individually and we all have confirmation bias. We latch on to something that kind of confirms our initial impressions of whatever to exclusion of something else. These conveyances, easements, all of this stuff is very old, and if you go back and you start looking through some of these things, there are some very, uh, interesting things. It talks about Fifteenth Street, who's allowed to really have access to those properties north of Fifteenth Street, south of Fifteenth Street. Uh, it talks about property owners. It doesn't talk about residents, it talks about property owners. And the other thing is jurisdictions. You know, the, the constitution allows for access, but there's some fine lines about jurisdictions and how far out those go. It, it gets very, very nebulous when you start talking about, you know, how far out these property owners go out. Uh, you know, hey, we have pictures of somebody sitting under a tent drinking a beverage. Well, yeah, but were they on their property? Just because they were beyond their seat wall doesn't mean they weren't on their property. So, I mean, there's a very fine jurisdictional distinction that needs to be interpreted here. So I just want to caution everybody about unexpected consequences. You start, you know, knee-jerk reacting to some of this stuff, and we may end up shooting ourselves in the foot on some of this stuff and getting answers back that we really didn't want to hear those answers, too. Things have evolved, and, and I don't think anybody in this room has a solid grasp of how all the dots connect here, because, I mean, there's just so many moving parts to this thing. A lot of gaps have been filled by tradition, ordinance have changed, and not necessarily addressed the specifics of the old stuff there, so I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, make haste very slowly on this thing because there are some very complex moving parts here, and I just want to make sure we understand everything and how it goes effectively, so. Maybe you just, we slowly let the legal process do its, run its course and find out how this thing is really wired together instead of anybody making different assumptions of what applies and what doesn't.
Anything else on council, I'm going to back up to the floor. Start with James and Busher.
Hey, um, Kenneth Stedder, I apologize if I was in the course.
Kenneth, you will just talk, you see how close I am? Yeah, that's it.
I wish I could extend.
Can they hear, can everyone hear, can I just say hello?
No.
Can I hear that? We're good, that's what you want to talk, go ahead.
Sorry about the voice. Um, I have appreciated this meeting here on some of the comments, some of the discussions. One of the things I really want to make sure that we all understand, I've been working for the U.S. Department of Justice for over twenty years, I spent ten years in D.C. with main justice, as part of my job up there was to talk about Native Americans and their natural resources, whether they had been neglected, whether the U.S. as a federal government was supposed to pay them back money. I dealt with millions and millions of documents from eighteen forty-two, forty-seven, you name it, where historians went through them. So just because we have an interlocal agreement that's twenty years old, that is irrelevant in my opinion completely, and same thing with the obvious deeds and, and other transfers that I've gone through this one. So just because documents are historical doesn't mean they're irrelevant, and we need to pay really close attention to. The bigger concern is what you were talking about, that you have different names for different, or, or, you know, descriptions for various things that have evolved over, over the years, but that is something that can be made black and white. It's not such a nuanced situation here. Um, so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that when people talk about age of documents, oh, there are so many nuances here, our word, you know, two grass draws away from the height of water level, it's not nuanced. This can be resolved, and this should be resolved. We've been here for over twelve years now, and we've seen this crop up on occasion every four or five years. This is when it's actually coming to a head. We all have to fight for this. A huge part of your property values are tied up on that shore, in that sand. We paid a lot of money for an extra monument when it came down, precisely suited to walk here, and like you were saying, gentlemen, in the back. The beach is our right, and it's a huge part of our property. And one last thing, when it comes to the separation between Bel Air Shores and Bel Air Beach, and the, and police officers, I appreciate them, they do a great job, they always say hi, and if they have problems, they come and help out, but the way the numbers are working out for Bel Air Shore, who supposedly are the rich fancy people, they should pay us, not us, and they should not be allowed to put contractor trucks on our streets. When we live on Twelfth Street, we have granted, some of them are, you know, local contractors, not for Bel Air Shores, but if I see Bel Air Shore trucks parking there, someone mentioned something about the, how the asphalt is done, well, they park in the grass. The grass is completely destroyed outside my house, so I want to close for that. Thank you very much, and let's just fight for this one.
Thank you. Before I go to council comments, somebody has some device that's making tones, please turn it off, it's very annoying. Counsel? Any other citizens? I see no other hands, I'm going to close citizen comments at this time. Item three on the agenda is the presentation of Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Is there a sheriff here who's going to present?
Good evening to all of the, those of you who don't know, I'm Sergeant David, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Um, looking at the month report from the month of April, the most recent we have at this time, uh, there was only one UCR crime that was listed on the report, which is a assault. It was a minor incident, there was no charges pressed in that matter. Uh, most of the activity, there were six hundred fifty-five events in the city of Bel Air Beach during the month, uh, majority of them were self-initiated by the deputies, being direct patrols, traffic stops, house checks, vehicles illegally parked, forty-seven of those, and thirty-five ordinance violations. Uh, we did have six crashes in the city, we've seen uptick in crashes in all of our beach communities with the increased traffic we've had over the past few months, we've been working on that, uh, trying to find ways to minimize the, the, you know, to get more cars, we get more crashes unfortunately. Um, we, we did have a hundred thirty-one citations and warnings issued in the city in the month of April. I looked at the, uh, reports from the month of May, and there was no significant activity in the month of May that you guys need to be concerned about at this time.
Great, thank you. Um, congratulations, one, one incident, one assault, and that wasn't an arrest, that's pretty good.
Yes.
In fact, you can't get much better, so once again, an excellent month, and thanks to the sheriff and the deputies who patrol our city, and all the citizens who keep an eye out, because that's half of the battle, too. Counsel, any comments?
Right, just one left. Um, what are you ready now? Six P.M., we have twelve hour shifts, um, so I am on from six P.M. to six A.M.
Any other council comments? Any citizens have any comments? Uh, yes, gentleman in the back. Sheriff, I'm just going to ask you to just briefly step aside, let him speak into the mic, and then come right back, okay? Perfect. Sort of name and address, and then, and then whatever your question is.
Yeah, Ken Blanch, he's on Palm Drive around the corner here. Um, just had a question, actually, I can ask a question to the sheriffs. Um, I appreciate the, you know, assistance with the traffic control and all that. Um, what we've noticed the last couple of days, we live right on Palm Drive, so therefore we just walk across the street to go to the Twelfth Street access, and, uh, what we've found is the traffic control box is right there on the sidewalk, and a sheriff's, a sheriff's vehicle has been parked on the sidewalk so that they can sit inside the vehicle and control the traffic leg to control the traffic that's turning toward Clearwater. Um, but what it does for us is, we now have to walk in the street into oncoming traffic to walk around the sheriff's vehicle, so I just wanted to bring that. So, I just wanted to bring that point up and see if that's something that could be addressed.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. As I previously mentioned, I worked at night so that I wasn't aware that was occurring. And I went off last two days, so I didn't know where that was occurring. We have been dealing with a traffic issue back across the causeway, all the way past the light at the Rock Road. You know, especially on the weekends. I know that we've been working on that. I don't know why they've been out here running the light. I didn't know they were doing that, but I will bring that to the attention of my supervisors and the day shift supervisors to, you know, so they can be aware that's an issue. Okay?
Great. Citizens, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, counsel, any last words? Sheriff, thank you again.
Thank you.
And Sheriff, if you get some information, if you can relay that to our city manager and then he can get that out, you know, with regard to that control box. That would be great. Maybe we'll get it at the next meeting.
Mayor?
Yeah?
That didn't happen this weekend and happened last weekend. That's part of our supplemental. We're trying some things. I think I mentioned.
You mentioned to me, yeah.
That we asked the patrol officer on one day to do it in the morning and one day to do it in the afternoon. And that's how they operated the control box.
Okay. Yeah, I'll pass on a captain liner. You can give a captain liner, as I may talk from regular basis, to, you know, see what the resolution that was. All right?
Great, thank you, Sheriff. Item four is presentation of FLC for our Lake City for completion of EMO 2 to Vice Mayor Gaddis and Councilmember Gunn. So, gentlemen, if you'll join me at the podium. Okay, so last time we were here, there was a presentation on EMO 2, which is the management training program. This is the second phase of it. There's a two-phase setup. Some people went to one. Dave Gaddis and Glenn Gunn completed number two. So, there's a certificate that goes with this and then we'll avoid the first one. Coming apart here. First one to Glenn Gunn.
Congratulations.
Second one to Vice Mayor. Sorry, Dave. Do another one. It's going to fall apart.
Yeah.
Put it over here. Since it's the public meeting, I'll tell you what I said to Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn. I said, "We don't pay for the frame repair there." Why did it fall apart? All right, consent agenda. We have one item on approved on May 3, 2021, city council meeting minutes. Motion?
Sold.
Twelve second. Second, Hanker. There's no discussion on this. So, this is to approve the May 3, 2021, city council meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I will object. So, it's six to one. Next, we move to our regular agenda. Item six, consideration of appointment of John J. Hayes to the Citizens Advisory Committee as an alternate member. This is for consideration of appointment of alternate member, which is John Hayes. First motion? Motion by Frank Banker, second?
Second.
Second, read as well. Frank? What typically do we ask? Mr. Hayes is here. He wishes to speak. Mr. Hayes, are you here? Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Come on up. You don't mind, right, Frank?
Okay. I think it does. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. John Hayes, 3210 Gulf Bogard. I served on the Finance Advisory Committee that issued a report a year ago, April. And I, just by way of background, because I don't think too many people know who I am. We, Mary Lou and myself have been full-time residents since, for the last four years in Beller Beach. We've owned property here since 1997 and we have been vacationing here since 1987. So, long time residents here in Beller Beach. And I do have an interest in Beller Beach and seeing that things go well. And if I can offer my services, I'm always happy to do that. My quick background for you. I was in public accounting for approximately five years until I secured my CPA certification and I couldn't wait to get out and go work for a for-profit organization. And I landed fortunately in real estate development and for over 40 years, that's what I did. I was a chief financial officer, then a president of a very large regional development firm, firm doing multifamily housing in the Midwest, most of the states in the Midwest. And then I started my own company, of which I sold my stock in 2015 and have been running retired since then. And I know this is only an alternate position and I have no voting rights, but I'm happy to serve. And that's why I'm here and that's why you're considering me. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your interest, Mr. Hayes. Stay up there in case anyone, anybody have a question for him? No questions, we'll go to our vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments? Citizens, any comments? Take it back to counsel, any last comments? Patty, do you want a single vote on this by individual? You want to call a roll on this or you just want to do it as a group? We're doing a group? I'm sorry? We do not?
We do not.
Okay. So, we're going to do this then as a group? This is consideration of appointment of John J. Hayes to the Citizens Advisory Committee as an alternate member. Yes, vote gets him on the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Hayes. Next, we have item seven, consideration of appointments to the Board of Adjustment. Counsel is going to vote by ballot to appoint one board member and up to one alternate member. There is currently one board member vacancy and two alternate board member vacancies. We have two applicants, Jane Mason Goldman and Gerald Wizelwade?
Yes.
I got that right?
Yep.
That's amazing. Okay, thank you. And so first, let's get the motion. Motion? So, move to Gaddis. Second?
Second.
Second with the Notaro Dave, would you prefer to then? Would you like to speak to counsel?
Yes.
And is Ms. Goldman here? Would you like to speak to counsel also?
Yes.
I bet you asked, okay?
Good evening. I'm Gerald Wizelwade. I live on 3100 Vol. 12, apartment 4C5. Been a resident of Beller Beach for about 19 years. Just became a resident of Florida after retiring from the United States Army. And just like Jane, I also believe in leading with the servant's heart. And there is a process that you have to do when you have to Board of Adjustment. People come in with changes and asking counsel for just to have variances. And I believe there's a process to go through as an engineer and a technical specialist of the auto industry and with a program manager in the United States Army. I understand that there's all kinds of stakeholders involved, including the city. I'll be honored to be a part of this committee. But looking at Jane's bio, she's been Woman of the Year, I've seen in the magazine. She has been, had publications and she's been to the White House. And I'm not sure if you want me to say that, but I think she's a better candidate than me. But I would be honored to serve in Beller Beach as an alternate and I would be honored to work with Jane on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest. Ms. Goldman?
I'm coming. Thank you for the luck. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to everyone. As Gerald, who has so aptly presented, I am a process person. I believe in process automation, invented some software that is being implemented all over the country in large banking institutions and healthcare organizations. That has to do with process, has to do with federal regulations, your interpretations of that, policies, procedures and the actual execution of.
Please speak right into the mic. We're going to lose your audio.
I was feeling.
You're speaking to the council.
So, I believe that my talents and prior business experience led itself to this particular job. I have lived with my beloved husband on 22nd Street for 22 years. And my family has lived here for over 40 years. Our address is 437 22nd Street. And I would be honored to serve not only the council, but the citizens. As some people here who know me know that I like to get stuff done and I love Beller Beach and I want to do everything I can to protect the beautification, yet the modernization of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments? Citizens, any comments in support? Yes, Mike Kelly?
Mike Kelly, 2740 Ibisca Drive West. I just want to endorse the candidacy of Jane Goldman. I have personally known the Goldman family for 25 years that I've lived in Beller Beach. And from her parents, her sister, Mark, her husband and Jane's participation in all city activities, when asked, they always step up to the plate. But I know both Jane and Mark are extremely involved in the undergrounding that took place in your subdivision on 22nd. And I'd be thrilled and honored to have Jane as a voting member of the Board of Adjustment. The one thing about Board of Adjustment is you've got to be fair. As the chairman of the Board of Adjustment, I understand that it's important to have people understand our codes. I don't doubt that both candidates will, if they don't already know, understand our codes. But without a doubt, Jane Goldman knows me right now as much as any candidate or any city member of the Board of Adjustment, so endorsing nomination. A fortunate candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other citizens? Back to counsel. Ready for a vote? So, the vote in consideration right now is for one board member and one alternate board member, up to one board, alternate board member. There's currently one board member vacancy and two alternate board member vacancies. The applicants are Jane Mason Goldman and Gerald Wizelwade. We have forms in front of us. You can fill these out and Patty will collect them. Make sure you sign them and print your name.
Quick question, Patty. Can we just put on one form since both of their names are there and it's got member and alternate? Rather than doing both of these forms?
There's access to springer of.
So, manager, please tab with me the results. Might not be too hard, but tap them just in case.
Councilmember Aki voted for Ms. Goldman as a member and Mr. Wizelwade.
Wizelwade.
Thank you. Wizelwade as the alternate. Councilmember Baker voted for Ms. Goldman as a member and Mr. Wizelwade as the alternate. Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Gaddis voted for Ms. Goldman as the member and Mr. Wizelwade as the alternate. Councilmember Gunn voted for Ms. Goldman as a member and Mr. Wizelwade as the alternate. Mayor Manzo voted for Ms. Goldman as the member and Mr. Wizelwade as the alternate. Councilmember Notaro voted for Ms. Goldman as the member and Mr. Wizelwade as the alternate. And Councilmember Swope voted for Ms. Goldman as the member and Mr. Wizelwade as the alternate.
Thank you. So, the results are for the regular membership, Jane Mason Goldman. Congratulations, you've won seven to zero. And Mr. Wizelwade, you're the alternate, seven to zero. Congratulations both of you. If I need a break? Good? Okay. Consideration of Ordinance 21-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for amendment of Chapter 86 signs of the City Code of Ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for the approval of the amendment to Chapter 86 signs of the City Code of Ordinances. It says, "Providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date." This doesn't say it, but Patty, this is the first reading, correct? Okay, so this is first reading. There needs to be two readings. Do I have a motion? Moved by, is that Frank or Glenn? Or Glenn?
Second.
Second, Dave Gaddis. Floor is open. Glenn Dunn, first.
I'll defer to the city manager if he wants to go ahead and encapsulate. Get here. I'm sorry. I'll defer to the city manager if he wants to go ahead and encapsulate.
Yeah, Fred and I worked on this together and we brought it to a work session. We had a, the council had a discussion and there were some comments that were made and Fred revised those comments and if there's anything Fred wants to speak to more at this point.
There's questions about.
Counsel?
Did you just hit highlights for everybody?
Well, maybe before we hit highlights, maybe I should go because I was the one who asked to have this moved back to a work session. This didn't come back via a work session. I had the most significant amount of comments, some of which were integrated into this and some of which were not. So, we'll take it and we'll discuss. That's what we want to do. Page 10, 86-61, general provisions. This is a sign ordinance and nowhere in it did I see a definition of what a sign is. How do we reconcile that? Now, I'm looking at this, by the way, in terms of what a constitutional challenge is going to look like. So, I didn't see a definition of what a sign is. Is a sign a banner? Is a sign a paper sign? Is a sign a temporary? Well, we talked about temporary signs, but what's a sign? I didn't see it. So, I'm asking. And then for the next topic will be item one, flashing activated signs? I don't know what flashing activated sign is. Because we don't define that either. Let me keep going. Streamers and ribbons, page 11. That's no big deal. There's just two periods. That just should be, that's a little typo. Just clean it up. Item eight is historically, item eight on page, well, it's 86-61. We've had a general lack of enforcement of 86. 86-61-8. It says, "Any sign placed on public park property, except as otherwise provided for in this code, may be removed by the city." The problem is sometimes it's removed by the city and sometimes it's not. We've seen it outside city hall here with election signs. And I'm not going to name names, but some are permitted and some are confiscated, leading to uneven enforcement. It was what somebody was talking about before about equal protection issues. If you're going to confiscate signs, then confiscate all of them. Don't confiscate the ones you don't like. That has been unequally enforced over the years and I don't like the way this is worded right now. I think it should be shall, not may. If you're going to permit some to city hall here, then you permit them for everyone, including the gentleman we're looking at who owns a pool service and somebody who has a lawyer, a lawyer, and maybe the hairdresser and maybe the construction guy and maybe the person running for political office. I'd love to have a sign in front of city hall. Can I? Probably not. Temporary construction signs. What's interesting here is that this city gives more deference to construction people's free speech rights than political free speech rights. And I have a real problem with that. Item 86-63, number one, talks about the construction and. Item 86-63, number one, talks about the construction and trade signs. And then number two says, "Those signs should not exceed 12 square feet." Okay, I'm all right with that because if you look around our town, construction people have big signs. But then when you go through the very next page, when we start talking about the residents and their signs, we're only allowed five feet. I didn't realize as a resident, my right was, you know, subordinate to the construction guy. It's nice to know that the guy who installs, you know, your debt gets to say more than us as elected officials and people trying to help this city who work for free. So I problem with that. 86-64 talks about temporary signs being permitted for a... an event. And I said this last time and it didn't get addressed in these changes, which is again why this should be done in a work session. What if there is no event? Right now, there's a very popular cause called Black Lives Matter. It's not an event, it's a cause. So is Jesus saves and as Robin's favorite, "I love my chihuahua." Okay? These are not events, they're just statements. And yet, if I read this, there needs to be an event in order to have a sign because our sign ordinance is exclusionary. Everything is prohibited unless it's permitted. And why am I going through all this? I'm trying to save you from that constitutional lawsuit that will be coming if we pass this. I won't bring it, somebody else will. We've already had two threats last summer from people. We talk about, then we go to page 13. And it talks about a temporary sign may display any message so long it is not harmful to minors. Well, maybe it should be some of the minors that I come in contact with in my practice. I don't think there's anything that could harm some of these kids. They have stuff that could make what little hair I have left curl. But we reference section 847.0116 and that does not match anything that I see that has any reference to children. In fact, 84166 says, quote, "Every act, thing, or transaction forbidden by this section shall constitute a separate offense and shall be punishable as such." Now, I don't know why I'm the only council member who picked this up, but I did read this and checked it back, so it's not read in this ordinance. Then we talk about...
I read that yesterday, those Florida statues. I think it's so vague that it could injure fish.
Yeah.
Any minor can object, whether it's good or bad. I mean, I'll pay a kid fuck, I'll pay a kid a million dollars.
Let me, I'm going to come back to you. I just thought I did something wrong, but there's no real point of order here, you just want to have some comment. Okay, so we'll hold on point of order and we'll come back to you next, okay? We talk about it being a one-time event. I don't know why one is the right number. So why not one, why not two, why not three, why not seven, why not 22 and a half? I don't know what the right number is, but where did we come up with one? Okay? And I'm asking these questions because these are the questions, folks, if you get sued, that attorney's going to be asking you. Except the states are a 1983 suit and we're talking about confiscation of signs here, which is abridgement of your First Amendment right. When we send the city manager out to do that, which he's done in the past, we had an attorney here who came, I think last July, and was really nice, but was threatening to sue us badly. And it would have been ugly because that was his specialty. So, size and height, residents, five foot is our maximum sign and we can't have, including the support, it can't be higher than four feet in height. It's a pretty low sign. So, again, more restrictions on residents than on contractors. I paid taxes in this city, so does everyone else out there. I get the bigger sign, if anyone gets a big sign. We'll keep going. I just spoke about it, the removal of unlawful signs. We're putting the discretion in the city manager's hands. And I will call out miscreants. It has been uneven. We have had residents complain to me, they complained to me when I was campaigning, we had residents come in here last year and complain about it. We had one resident, they pulled the sign out and the guy said, "You pulled it out?" And I put in two. I didn't see him go back out and take it out. Okay? So uneven enforcement is going to get this city in trouble. I don't like the idea of confiscating signs. And I don't like giving that power to confiscate signs. And I did read all of this detail here as to why it's beneficial, but you have to understand that if you confiscate a sign, you've cut off a free speech right. And that's enough to trigger the lawsuit, nothing more. There's your 1983 suit. And that's an expensive federal proposition. Political signs are not defined. What is a political sign? What is it? Republicans are great, Republicans aren't great. Support the Congress, don't support the Congress, is that a political sign? According to us, it has to be a ballot issue and qualified candidate. Well, what if it's not? I just named three things. Trump 2024. Clinton 2024, I'll be equal here, okay? They're not candidates right now. We had a gentleman in this town, several, I think there's Trump 2024 is out right now in our city. We had a gentleman who had Trump signed two years before Trump even went in. We had another guy who put banners, this is why I asked for signs to be defined, on the back of his house that was so big, he probably could have seen them from Largo. He was just hoping we were going to do something. And that's what prompted us to say, let's hold off. I don't know why it has to be a ballot issue and qualified candidate. I'm not a qualified candidate yet. Mayor for Manzo 2022, why can't I put it on my house? Mayor for Manzo for governor, how about that? I can't put that on my house either. You don't have to be a qualified candidate and I don't know why we're limiting it. Then we say that they have to be removed within 30 days of the election. I don't know why that has to be. I know it looks ugly to have your Hubert Humphrey sign up there, but you know, if you want to put it out there, you can put it out there, it's your property. I don't understand it, okay? We talk about aesthetic standards of the city. So we put a Realtor's sign up, that's okay, but no political sign. Just, I don't see how this is constitutional. I think that's pretty much most of my key comments. We can debate this all night long. Frank Bankard is up next, Mr. Bankard.
The problem I have with this is every time, now I just departed this process, but you want to move to the eight-page ordinance and now to 15? With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, if you get done with every of you, you're interjecting with probably eight pages. I'd like to just leave the other one alone. You've got a great city manager. Love uses discretion.
I'm going to go ahead and agree with Councilmember Bankard. I have seen the round and round number one, it's worked, it's working, so I totally 100% agree with you.
I have a question. Mayor, you have plenty of time to go through this and you know absolutely where the problem is in this thing. And I applaud you for being able to analyze it like that and point out the shortcomings of our city attorney, however...
Well, I didn't say that.
Okay, well, I didn't say it's a shortcoming. It's a very difficult job. Basically, there are a lot of flaws in this particular set of code. My question is, rather than dragging all this out in the middle of one of these meetings, why didn't you just give them a call?
Oh, because Glenn Dunn said, "I can't call the city attorney," and you all voted for that, remember?
I believe...
You wanted it done in public.
I actually believe you can go through Lynn Reeves and he will contact the city attorney.
Well, if you think I'm going to explain constitutional law, no defense to Mr. Reeves, I'm not doing that, okay? And that's why I asked that this be done in a work session and you all turned that down. My thing was move item five, eight, and nine to the regular agenda and not one person slept with my motion. So we debated in public, which is the way Florida wants it to be done, we air our dirty laundry. This was not done to embarrass Mr. Riley in any way, shape, or form. Number one, most of the comments that I had put on, he had recognized. He also, if you go in here, and I'm actually one of the people who read most, I did read all the cases, I read most of the cases that he referenced. These are 40, 30-page, 50-page cases from the Supreme Court. They're not all in lockstep. It would be nice if this law was clear at the federal level, it's not. He's done the best I think he can with compiling it together, but I'm telling you, and listen to this, and cameras, make sure you record it, okay? When you get sued for a 1983 violation, whoever the attorney who's handling this will ask every one of these questions, probably about 20 that I didn't. Because they're going to know, why do you allow a contractor? You're talking about specs. So I could put John Jones Construction in 12-foot letters, 12 square feet, but I can't put Manzo for governor in six square feet. That's illegal. How is that? How is that? There's your unconstitutionality the way I say it, there's your challenge, and you're in federal court for two years, hemorrhaging money. So that's why it's here. Anyway, Mr. Gaddis and then Mr. Gunn.
My only comment.
Based on the city manager's experience, what is the reasonable level of specificity in these things? I mean, what's a reasonable burden that we should have on this? I mean, we have a very thin staff here. We have a city attorney who doesn't staff this out to this constitutional law staff. We've got one guy working on this thing. So my question is, what is a reasonable burden for which we should be doing this kind of stuff? And I'm in favor with Frank, I'm in favor with Rita, is, you know, there's a certain, we pay this guy to be risk manageable for us. And if something comes up, then we figure out how to deal with it. We may back down entirely, which is the way we did it before. Somebody brought up an issue, we backed out, said, "Yeah, you're probably right on that." We backed out. We've done a reasonable job trying to answer this thing, but we cannot write every ordinance to the detail or specificity for a constitutional defense. We don't have the staff, we don't have the time and like that, we certainly don't have the paper to print this stuff on. So I guess what I'm saying here is, a lot of questions were asked previously, the city attorney's gone back and reworked some of this stuff, we've got it, and I think we need to move forward on this stuff. It seems like we continue to circle the drain on many, many issues. It keeps going back to committee, goes back to work sessions, there aren't enough work sessions in a month to discuss. How many times do these things go back to committees? So I think it's time to, given it a reasonable effort, let's move forward with it and we'll deal with it on an exception basis rather than trying to cover any constitutional reasons. I don't think it's necessary.
Allen?
I kind of agree a little bit with everybody. It seems like to fix a lot of this, it would take more paper than we have, but some of these seem like they could be easy, like the double period, maybe a may to a shall. And I kind of agree with you with that, the construction 12 feet, but we're only allowed five feet to say how much I love my dog. I really love my dogs. So my suggestion with that is just split and make everyone eight square feet, regardless of construction or dog loving or political. So some of this, I think, can be resolved very easily and normally I would agree horribly with Rita and Frank, but after that, one gentleman came up and had a case and was very nice about it, I definitely want to patch up any loopholes, but honestly, I think no matter how well you do this, there's always going to be a way. So I say we just do some easy fixes, like the five feet to 12 feet, make eight for everybody and the double periods and whatnot and keep our fingers crossed. And again, if a big problem arises, we'll just have to back down and pull it and say, hey, put whatever you want up until we figure this out again and hopefully that won't happen.
Counsel, any comments? Go to the citizens. Oh, less than a term. Less than a term, I can't hear you, I'm too far away.
I would agree with Rita and Frank that, you know, this seems to be overkill, that we go back to our original one, the sign ordinance we had in effect for a long time.
I just want, you know, it's nice to go back to the good old days, but I remember Mr. Affandulos, Attorney Affandulos, coming here after Mr. Reeves confiscated his political sign and gave a very nice letter to the city saying how he was a partner in Michigan firm and this was his specialty and he was ready to basically take us in under 1983 suit, but he said, "You know, I don't want to do that to my city, I'm going to give you the chance to rectify this." And we made a decision as a council, you can have your sign back and we were going to just temporarily not enforce the sign ordinance and that's what led to this. So the good old days aren't that good because there was problems with that sign ordinance and there still is problems with that sign ordinance. So whether we patch it up, correct it, go with this one, it is no matter. My comments have been placed on the record, I'll stand by every one of those and there's probably 10 that I missed, but you know, I don't know that, Pat, keeping the old one and just saying it's good, it's probably not good either, that's what got us into this. So we actually suspended enforcement of it for a while, so I don't know that that's right either. That's why I want this into a work session. Sometimes, you know, the process is typically work session for this stuff, you hash it out, you hash it out some more and you bring it to counsel when it's ready to go. And to me, this one wasn't quite ready to go. We could have had a work session last month, nobody wanted it, so it gets done here tonight. So I'm not going to make a motion. If somebody wants to table it, they can table it, we can vote it down and then it'll leave us right where we're at.
Can I make a motion to table it?
Kill it, you can kill it on the vote. If you want to table it, that's a separate thing, so you'll have to decide which one you want.
Hey, can I make a comment before we move on?
Sure, absolutely.
The city attorney reworked the whole one and I'm sure he worked closely with the city manager, has gone to enforce it and managed to risk it. So what's your level of confidence in how well it's written and are you ready to enforce as city manager? I mean, are we at a reasonable stage here where we can move forward on this thing?
Do I ask that to the city manager or city attorney?
I'm asking both of them. The city attorney amended the initial and he's answered a lot of the questions and concerns and he still has those concerns. I mean, are we at the 90% stage where the city manager, you may enforce what we can enforce?
I'd like to answer your question, but I'd like to say a few other things first.
Charlie, why don't you go first and then we'll have city manager discuss afterward.
I have a choice to make and I could choose to be livid with the comments I've heard or I could go a different direction and I'm going to go a different direction. The different direction is, this is exactly the way things should go, is y'all should debate various things. You have talked about this in a workshop, you've talked about it in a city commission meeting. I will tell you what I've done based on the last feedback I got or I received. I went back and listened to the tape and I went through and made the changes that were itemized in the last session that we had. I'm not offended by the comments from the city council, from anybody, and I'm especially not offended by the comments from the mayor, just so everybody's clear on that. The object is to get it right and I've said this every time it's been discussed, that this is a complicated area of the law, as Mayor Manzo said, and he nicked this line off of me, as I said it before. The court cases are not consistent at both the Supreme Court and the other appellate levels and trying to sift through and figure out the answers is a challenging thing. Having said that, I did the absolute best I could based on, first, the initial ordinance that you had in place and then I brought in various other aspects of the court ordinance that you have. The things I added were not whimsical on my part, the things I added were very deliberate in response to one of the points you raised, Mayor Manzo, about the size of signs. I based much of that on what other cities did, so it wasn't me picking a sign size out of the blue. It was based on, I looked at quite a few different cities and they had residential or political signs and a residential zone would have a square footage of X and commercial signs would have a different square footage. Those were all based on the different things that I looked at in trying to come up with a coherent ordinance for you. Having said that, if y'all want to change standards, which is basically what you're doing, then that is exactly what you as the council should do, is debate how the standards should be changed. I, you know, if there were only one or two things, I would say, let's debate them and have a resolution to those things based on the number of things you pointed out. some of which were new and I was hearing for the first time. Then I would not recommend that you go forward and pass this as it is. I would recommend that you make every effort to try and get it right. And get it right, to me, means that y'all have a very thorough discussion. And to me, the thing I will do, if you want to revisit this on another occasion, is I will go back to the various points that were raised, and go through them methodically like I did in other sessions. This is a, and I will say for the second time this evening, a complicated area of the law, and it is, it's one where if you get it wrong, then you will be in federal court. In federal court cases, um, I'm saying this example primarily for folks in the audience. I've said it to the council when this was brought up before. And the other city I represent, several years ago, we had a group that contacted the city and was ready to file a federal lawsuit based on a existing city ordinance related to churches in residential areas. And you don't need to know much more than that, other than when that group contacted the city, um, I contacted their staff attorney, and we addressed, between myself and city manager, we addressed the various concerns that that group had. They were legitimate concerns. The, the last time that particular ordinance had been revised was forty or fifty years ago. In the space of forty or fifty years, there had been several Supreme Court cases, federal cases that related to the exercise of religious affiliation that might, that should've resulted at some point in the city modifying its ordinance. The city had not done that yet. These folks that contacted me pointed out the basis for why they were contacting us. This is what that group does. And we went through the appropriate steps, not getting into them, but to address what was legitimate concerns. From their standpoint, they gave us the opportunity to do it in a, uh, very methodical manner of simply changing the ordinance. And that's what we did. And everybody at the end of the day was happy, because the city didn't spend fifty to a hundred thousand dollars defending a lawsuit, because on the other side was reasonable attorneys. The attorney that came here last year, was, uh, last summer, was also an exceptionally reasonable man, and he pointed out to myself and to Lynn, what he thought were the concerns. And, um, you know, he did say he did not wanna initiate a case against his own city. He wanted us to work on addressing what he thought were deficiencies. And I would agree with him, there were things that needed to be revised, and that's what we've tried to do. So my, my recommendation to you is, I'm not, uh, it's y'all's decision to make. I'm not an advocate for simply keep the existing ordinance, I think it needs to be updated. I, at this point, would be an advocate for address the points that have been raised this evening, and go back to the drawing board and continue the methodical process that we've been doing. And I will tell you, I will do everything I can to address the points. And, you know, some of them, I will tell you, I'll just pick one for, for example corpuses, and I'll go back to what Mayor Manzo said. You know, it, it, the way you characterize it, I disagree with. You characterize it as the city's making a decision to, um, that commercial signs are more important than political signs in a residential area. That isn't, has nothing to do with the thought process I had in writing it. What, what I did in writing it was use, look at other examples, and try to be, uh, in many ways mirror what other examples were of other cities who have tried to do the same thing we're trying to do. Y'all, it's within y'all's purview to determine what these standards are for the city of Bel Air Beach. And you can, to some degree, make sign size uniform, if that's what you choose to do, um, across the board. I mean, Boeck Raton, when they as a city passed a lot of ordinances, when that city really came into existence, they were known for being very, um, uniform about sign size across the board. And in some ways, that resulted in, I, this is a long time ago, this is in the seventies, but they had lawsuits because they, some people argued they were too restrictive. And, you know, the thing I will tell you about Boeck Raton, and the difference between there and here, is Boeck Raton had a lot of commercial property, and you can imagine why McDonald's didn't want to be confined to a sign that was five feet square. Um, Bel Air Beach doesn't have, uh, really that problem. You don't have a McDonald's anywhere in the city, you don't have anything like that. You have residential districts. So, you know, you have some basis for restricting sign size. And I'm only using that for purposes of an example. But my, my comments and guidance to you are, uh, continue the process that we've been working on for a long time. Um, I will tell you, I'm not somebody that wants to keep going back to the drawing board over and over and over again. I, I, at some point, you hit the point of diminishing marginal returns. But as I, I will say consistently with every time I've spoken on this issue, this is important that you get this right, because if you are ever subject to a case, you want to be able to say that we went through a very long, torturous, uh, deliberative process to try and get it right. A lot of the things, I mean, to me, the length of things is not anywhere near as important as content. A lot of the stuff that I added to this was oriented around one central theme, and that is that you have stated a legitimate basis for your regulation, and that is the aesthetics of your town. It's very important to the citizens of Bel Air Beach, and to having read your code, and to the city council, that you maintain certain aesthetic standards for your community. You want this to be an attractive, uh, community, and you really don't want it, I mean, you certainly don't have blight compared to some other communities, but you, you want a certain level of standards. And that's fine for the city to have a certain level of standards. A lot of the stuff I added to this was to buttress why you are, that is so important to you. And I know that took up several pages, and again, page count is not that relevant to me. It's what, what is the purpose of doing that? It's not filler, it's to put in a basis for you to so strongly adhere to a certain level of standard. So that's, that's hopefully some insight into, um, you know, how this was put together. I, again, will, will close my comments by saying, uh, my feelings aren't hurt by anything that's been said. I simply want to get it right and be responsive to the city council, and ultimately, the citizens in having a strong sign ordinance that minimizes the opportunities for the city to end up in court. So I hope that's helpful.
Mr. Riley, I wanna say something. You know, I went through ten minutes of issues that I had with it, but I'm just gonna pick one of the items you just mentioned, which is outstanding in here, okay? Because again, I read these constitutional law cases, and, um, you have actually, you need to show a compelling reason when you're a state to why you're doing what you're doing. Rarely do you see it mentioned in an ordinance, and if you do see it mentioned, half the time it's wrong. Mr. Riley's taking the extra step of putting it in several times, and in each section, why we're doing what we're doing. So this is not to toss this whole thing. I just went through, I don't know, ten pages, sixteen pages of ordinance. And really, if you boil my comments down, they probably fit on a page. So I think overall, we have the nucleus of something good, and I would hate to see us toss this out. More than that, I can't agree with you more. Going back to the old ordinance, you might as well just get ready a lawyer up. That's the reason why we wrote this one, is because the last one was probably gonna be called unconstitutional if it was challenged, and we didn't wanna find that out.
Motion to table number eight, agenda.
Um, okay, do I have a second on the table?
Second.
Second was, yeah?
Zoe.
Right, okay, sorry. Good discussion on that?
I would like to just add the, I think we're in the right direction. I don't think we should just toss this. I believe we can start with the mayor's comments. Um, I hope you were able to keep up with all that, and if not, I hope...
No, it wasn't due to the volume of them. But I will listen to the tape.
We should be able to get a copy of the video.
I'm sorry, guys, my mistake, I wasn't sure, I just looked it up. There is no discussion on this one, so I'm gonna call point of order. I'll call point of order on myself for not knowing it, but ultimately, I'll just have to cut off the conversation. So what we need is a majority vote, we have a motion to table, motion to table's gonna set this aside. Till the city attorney comes back with a revision. And my recommendation, if you want to amend it, that's fine with me. Um, bring it back to a work session, so we can hash this out, instead of hashing it out at a horrible session. Let's knock off any issues that we have, bring this thing here and pass it. That's just a suggestion, it doesn't matter to me, I'll do this all night, so up to you, Mr. Banker.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just one comment. We did bring this to a work session. The council gave the city attorney comments. He revised them and did what I think he felt were the changes that were needed. And it seems like, uh, at times, I'm gonna use a word that used to be used in the army. We're pulled over by a mouse maneuver, because every time we come back, we come back with something else. So if we're gonna have a work session, I, you know, ask all the council, bring your changes, and let's fix this and finish it. He started this last October. We brought this to the council, what, this is the third time, I think? Right? Uh, and, and here we are, we're gonna bring it back again. And, and, you know, it concerns me that right now, you suspended the sign ordinance. Okay, so there is no enforcement. And I get complaints every day about, why is this six-foot sign sitting out in somebody's front yard? And, well, I can't enforce anything, because really, the sign ordinance is shut down. So, you know, I implore you to, when you come back with your comments, come back with them all. That's all I'm asking, because we need to resolve this and move it on.
As you read things, you see other things. And there's seven people on this council, another attorney, two away from me. I'm not the only person.
No, we're because you stopped me from making comments, and now you're...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, you are, you're right, you're right, there's no more comments, so I don't even know why that comment was made.
No, I'm just asking all of you.
Well, okay, there's no debate on this, okay? So your point, though, is well taken, everybody come with your changes. Now, are we gonna do it in a work session, or you wanna do it in general? I don't care.
Well, I can tell you...
Because if you change your session...
Work session is, is the budget, and we can do that as part of that.
We'll have another one next week, I'll have another one in three weeks. Whenever Mr. Riley is ready, I'll have one every night, if it's that important to this city. I don't care. It's up to Mr. Riley, I'm not gonna put undue pressure on him to write a constitutional sign ordinance. So, Mr. Riley, how much time do you think you need to revise this? Don't tell me six months.
That's my point, that's what I'm trying to say.
Um, if you give me a couple of weeks, I would certainly appreciate it. As in two.
So we'll do this, we have several budget sessions coming up. When Mr. Riley tells you it's ready, we'll schedule it for after one of the shorter budget sessions, not the first one that goes on all night, but like, one of the simple ones. Would that go for like a half an hour? Let's do it that way, is everybody good with that? Okay, so Frank Banker has a motion on the floor to table this. We need a majority vote, and it will table, okay? I'll go all in favor, all in favor to table this. I? Anyone opposed? We have Glenn Dunn opposed, let the record reflect that. So it's six to one, it's tabled. And we'll move on to item nine. Anybody need a break before we do this? We're good? Okay, consideration of ordinance twenty-one oh three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section two dash two forty-five E eight, section two dash two forty-seven B, section two dash three five zero A, section two dash three five zero B, and section two dash three five zero C of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section two dash forty-five E eight, two dash two forty-seven B, section two dash three five O A, section two dash three five O B, and section two dash three five O C of the city code ordinances. Providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Planning and zoning board city review, uh, city code review is where this came from. This is the first reading, it was not mentioned in there, I'm putting that in. Um, and the explanatory is, this is consideration of the board's recommendation amendments to the city code regarding administrative procedures, including authority for expenditures. Do I have a motion? Motion by Frank Banker, second, Leslie Natero. Frank Banker.
The owner speaks for himself.
Can't do that yet, but thank you. Leslie Natero?
Simple, appropriate.
Any, um, any city council comments? Besides? That? So what we're doing here, folks, that was a bunch of numbers, and I'm gonna explain it to you. This is to increase the city manager's purchasing power. So what we're doing is, we're increasing the, uh, the purchasing from, it was originally, where he didn't need to come to council, it was originally three thousand up to ten thousand, and now we're gonna go from, um, I'm sorry, it was originally, it was three thousand, and now it's gonna go up to five thousand, okay? So in other words, he doesn't, it gives him greater autonomy to spend on his own. Um, same thing, the second part of this, it was ten thousand, and we're going up to twenty-five thousand as the minimum. That would require two bids, correct?
And the...
And the city council's approval, right, okay.
Ten thousand.
And then there's some other changes, just with how enforcement is to be done on certain things, with, you know, with regards to, um, we have a fine serving process and stuff like that. It was just some technicalities, we had stuff about the city police, which we don't have a city police force, so we eliminated some of these references. It was, some of that was more ministerial. Uh, I have one question on this, page three, section five B. I'm wondering why section five B, it says the city council may authorize expenditures from ten thousand to twenty, ten thousand one to twenty-five thousand, upon receipt of at least three written bids quotes. And then, it seems to me that, it looks like that should be, I don't know, it looks like it should be in the next section. It was ten thousand originally in the next section, I'm seeing, so...
No, well...
I was a little confused reading whether they're doing that.
What, the ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, we don't have to send it out to bid, we can get proposals, bring them to the city council. And as you've noticed, have known in the past couple of years, we've had a few bids of like sixteen thousand or seventeen thousand, that was much more cost-effective to use those bids and suspend the bid requirements. So what this'll do, the minimum bid requirement will be anything that costs over twenty-five thousand. The city council, it'll have to go out to bid if something costs over twenty-five. If it's less than twenty-five, between ten and twenty-five, the city council can take the quotes that we obtain, the staff obtains, and approve the purchasing, whatever that is.
I do have a problem with this, you know, in terms of raising limits, with you as my city manager. I feel comfortable. But I've heard stories about how it used to be, prior to you being here. And I can hear good stories, I heard a lot of bad stories, and I don't take an opinion either way. But I hope you're here for a long time, but if someday you're not, I don't know, what am I gonna get? Am I gonna get Lynn Reeves, or am I gonna get the other person? And we're changing this authority, and we're giving it to a city manager to spend money without our approval, really. So I'm comfortable with you, I'd sign this right now, okay? But that's my worry, is what if we don't get somebody who's quite as honest? What do we do then? Because we won't see it, we will not see it at the council, whatever the council that's gonna be here, won't see it.
Well, you're actually only increasing my authority in two thousand dollars, really. Everything else, the council's gonna see. So that's part of the, how we set up our... How it's set up or recommended. I mean, the three thousand dollars was probably twenty years ago. You don't buy much for three thousand dollars today.
Chairman, if, uh...
Okay.
I, I would just stand with that comment there. I mean, these original values are regular, how long, how many decades ago? And certainly that's not keeping pace with the current cost of living and cost increases. The, I mean, realistically, this guy needs the freedom to move forward on things quickly and not have to wait for a council session every month to come forward. The other aspect of this is, if someday Lynn Reeves will, you have somebody else standing or sitting in that chair, and we deal with that in the vetting process. We don't have to deal with every code and everything with writers, so, I mean, let's keep pace with what's going on, give this guy room to maneuver and then we execute his business and, uh, why, what we had and deal with the next guy in the vetting process.
Sheriff, can you detect who's making that noise in the audience? Because I've asked once nicely. If you find it, please point out the person, we're asking them to step out, okay?
All right. I also have a comment.
Yes.
Actually, the first one is, uh, about the city manager. Ultimately, uh, we are accountable to the city manager. So if we have a city manager who is out of control, comes back on us, it's, it's up to us to pull back the reins in case there's a spending issue. The, the other item is, uh, it's kind of silly, but what happens if it's fifty cents between five thousand and five thousand and one, you come to council?
Well, the, the way that it's set up is, as an example, if you approve something for purchasing the budget, you know, we just use, I guess you could use five thousand and one cent, if you wanted to, uh...
It's, it's a whole, I'm just saying.
But the, the way the five thousand to ten thousand is set up is, if it's not in the budget, then it comes to you. If it's in the budget, because you've approved the budget, then we can go ahead and expand.
And you have discretion, Mr. Reeves, and you use that discretion, what, eighty-dollar, I'm sorry, you want two hundred dollar items for one-hour discussions to this council? So you have the discretion to bring anything you wish to council? So if it's fifty cents offered, whatever, that's your prerogative to bring it here. You could bring a twenty-dollar expenditure if you wanted to, if you felt that it needed council approval, okay?
The point I was making was, was not a fifty-cent item, it's something between, there's breakpoints of an even dollar. And there's no, I, I know it's, like I said, I know it's kind of silly, but hey, it's in here and, uh, and so we don't have clear direction on what we do between five thousand and five thousand and one dollars.
He can bring it to council?
And we've got the same problem whenever you get to the ten thousand dollar mark.
Well, you can correct it one way, you can say I have authority to five thousand and one dollars, or you can do the other thing and just make it five thousand. Eliminate the one.
Yeah, one corrects it, so, and I don't think it's a substantial correction that we're gonna have a problem with passing it.
You can, you can take it from, the, the reason I did that is because in the code review was to try to clarify, and actually that's how the ordinance kind of written itself previously, so...
Well, the reason why I bring it up is if you, you hit between that one dollar breakpoint, that creates an argument. Whereas in, in code, if it's down to a single penny, now there's no argument.
Well, then the solution is make it five thousand.
So it would actually be five thousand and one cent would be the starting point. And then the same goes with a ten thousand R, it would be ten thousand and one cent.
And one cent.
So we're gonna have to amend this one. So we have to do an amendment first, so, uh, Vice Mayor, you wanna go through it, page by page, and you have to do an amendment, first you have to make a motion to amend it, then you have to tell us exactly what's going to amend, then we have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, well, I'd, uh...
So start with page one.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, page one, bottom paragraph, under whereas, from five thousand and one, uh, to five thousand and one cent.
Question. I don't find anywhere financial department, what they're saying. I mean, it's five thousand dollars, five thousand, five thousand and one cent, it's only one cent. What is the difference between five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars and one cent?
Yep, I think it should be not five thousand and one cent, what he wants to say, it's just more than five thousand.
I'm spelling it out of what it, as far as wording is...
Why are we laboring this over a penny?
It's not over a penny, it's over ninety-nine unquestionable cents. And, and if you've got a, you've got a, basically a broken council, this man can spend that money, and if you get in that area where we disagree and we're fighting with each other, I'm not saying it's gonna be us, but in the future that could happen. He has clear direction, anything over this, even to the penny, he needs to come to the council. Whereas now, it's...
But that's the beauty of government. The government says this is an ordinance in place. If the next guy is a tel de han, if you hire him, okay, and he abuses that, then we pull the ordinance.
Yeah, that's not the issue, that's not his issue. His issue is that right now it's up to five thousand and then the next one starts at five thousand and one. So on the crazy thing, which is not crazy, okay? If, if Lynn gets some proposal for five thousand dollars and seventy-six cents, he has no guidance as to what to do, so he's just correcting really what's at hand.
Well, it has to go back to the, it doesn't say...
More than five thousand here.
Yeah, you just have to say more than five thousand, Dave, you don't put a penny in.
More than five thousand.
That's all you need, you can make it more than five thousand and less cents, okay? So that's good, that's page one, so five thousand, whereas five thousand and one becomes five thousand?
Yep.
Okay, next page.
All right, uh, let's see here, we keep going to page three, and we will change, uh, section five B to five thousand also.
Yes.
Uh, it appears two times, then there's a ten thousand and one, it should be ten thousand. And further down the page, section six, twenty-five thousand, uh, should be more than twenty-five thousand.
Faster than I can read them.
Next line, more than twenty-five thousand. And it's, it's worded in excess of twenty-five thousand and one, but I believe it would just be twenty-five thousand.
I think you skipped page two, um, it's like twenty-five thousand and one, on the very first paragraph.
Uh, yes, I did, thank you for the correction. Let me see if I got this right. You, I'm gonna say it, because I'm gonna have to call it, and then you tell me if it's what you want, okay?
Okay.
So page one, last sentence, five thousand and one becomes five thousand.
Correct.
Page two, twenty-five thousand and one in the second line becomes twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
No other changes on page two? Page three, five B, five thousand and one becomes five thousand?
Correct.
Second line, five thousand and one becomes five thousand?
Yes. Further down the paragraph?
Wait, hang on, I'm just seeing this ten thousand and one, should that be?
Ten thousand.
That should be ten thousand, we can get that.
May authorize expenditures in excess of ten thousand.
Then six C, twenty-five thousand becomes twenty-five thou, that's, twenty-five thousand and one becomes twenty-five thousand?
Correct.
Second line, twenty-five thousand and one becomes twenty-five thousand?
Expenditure, yeah, correct.
And then the last, um, the last line of that paragraph, in excess of twenty, it should be, in excess of twenty-five thousand and one, it should say twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
All right, so that's the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Leslie Natero. Anybody wanna discuss it? We gotta call it again, so please make sure, I'm gonna call for the amendment only. This is to amend the ordinance, only amending the ordinance, you're not passing it yet, okay? Um, hang on, citizen comments? Thank you, no citizen comments. Back to council for last comments. Let me call it, okay? We're calling for the amendment. The amendment on the, on the floor right now is to amend ordinance 2103, page one, last line of the first page, five thousand and one will become five thousand. Patty, I hope you're getting all of this. Um, page two, there's the whereas clause, the second line, twenty-five thousand and one will become twenty-five thousand. Page three, five D, five thousand and one will become five thousand in the first line. In the second line, five thousand and one will become five thousand. In the second to last line of the paragraph, ten thousand and one will become ten thousand.
Excuse me, uh, more than ten thousand.
In the excess, okay, more, okay, so in excess of ten thousand up to twenty-five, we should put an upper in there, okay? So in excess of ten thousand up to twenty-five thousand. And then six C, twenty-five thousand and one becomes twenty-five thousand. And then second line, it says twenty-five thousand and one, it becomes twenty-five thousand. And then last line of C, twenty-five thousand and one becomes twenty-five thousand. Those are the changes that we're going for amendment, a yes vote will pass it. Mr. Riley, Mr. Reeves, please, can't tell us your conversation, it's an open public meeting, I have to ask. Please, it's an open public meeting, we have to have anything that's said in public.
I said something, not you.
Okay, I saw you whispering in his ear, so the public's entitled to hear everything that we say up here. So I, I just have to ask.
I respectfully disagree with you on that one.
Okay? You respectfully disagree that this is a public meeting?
No.
Okay.
I'm the attorney of one of my clients.
Okay. Objection is noted for the record. Okay, we're ready to call that question. Patty, this is for the amendment only? Yes? All in favor of the amendment as it was read? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The amendment carries seven to zero. Now we're voting on the amended ordinance. Uh, any city council comments before I go to the, uh, city? Residents? City residents, any comments on ordinance 2103? June Van Sgooy.
Part of the person's responsibility of being the city manager is to look at possible scenarios and things that could happen, okay? Should he pass away tomorrow? His house is sold, obviously, in Miller Beach. Should he pass away? Should he leave town? It's a holiday weekend, okay? And most of this council is gone, and you can't get a quorum, and you have a city manager that's in, in place, that's out of control. What are you gonna do? I'm just thinking head, every time I'm hearing you all support him one hundred percent, and that's good, okay? That's absolutely good. But when you're making decisions regarding the city, you have to look to the future. Any one of you, any one of you can be gone at any moment. So you have to be looking constantly at possible scenarios that could be happening to safeguard the city. I don't see it here, thank you.
Thank you. Citizens, any other comments? Bring it back to council for final comments, but the last word, come to Frank Banker.
Oh, I think, uh, resident brings out a good point.
Frank, I can't hear you, can you speak into that?
I think the resident brings out a good point, but this one is pertaining to the city manager, not anybody acting as the city, well, being acting the city manager, but if he says passes away or something like that, uh, no real issues. Um, you wouldn't have to worry about this until another city manager's put in place. So there, there's, there's the safeguard. That's all I have to say, I'll get to the vote to get this thing moved.
No other comments on the call question. I have to read through it again, so as passed with the amendment, up for consideration is consideration of ordinance 2103, it's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for amendments to section two dash two forty-five E eight, section two dash two forty-seven B, section two dash three five zero A, section two dash three five zero B, and section two dash three five zero C of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section two dash two forty-five E eight, two dash two forty-seven B, section two dash three five zero A, section two dash three five zero B, and section two dash three five zero C of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading, if this passes as amended, then we will come back for a second reading at our next regular meeting. An a, a yes vote will pass this. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Yes.
Can we do a vocal on this?
Sure you can, yes, that's right, I'm sorry, it's an ordinance. Patty, uh, Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Natero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Banker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. Thank you Patty for reminding me it is an ordinance, so we do have to pass it that way. Okay, we're at eight oh six, everybody good on council? Item ten. This is a consideration of ordinance 21 dash zero four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section forty, fifty-four dash thirty-four A and section fifty-four dash sixty-two A of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section fifty-four dash thirty-five A and section fifty-four dash sixty-two A of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective date. This recommendation comes from the planning and zoning board, the city code review. This is the first reading, although it doesn't state that. Um, the, this, the explanation is this is consideration of the board's recommendation amendments to the city code regarding administrative procedures including fee schedules. First, do I have any, a, a motion?
So moved.
Motion by, second by Frank Banker, re-swope.
Now, we've already discussed this multiple times as well, so I'm good with it and ready to move forward.
Any other council comments? If there are no council comments, I'll move to city, uh, citizens. Any citizen comments on this? No citizen comments? Back to council, last word, Dorita, Swope.
Now, I'll call the question.
Okay. No other council comments? No. Okay, so this is consideration of ordinance 21 dash zero four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for the amendments to section fifty-four dash thirty-five A and section fifty-four dash sixty-two A of the city code ordinances, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of the amendments to section fifty-four dash thirty-five A and section fifty-four dash sixty-two A of the city code ordinances, providing for a copy to be kept on file, providing for separability, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing for an effective date. A yes vote will, uh, this is first reading, a yes vote will get this to its second reading and ultimately to become law or change in law. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Natero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Banker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye, passes seven to zero, we'll look for a second reading. Okay, item eleven, consideration of resolution 202106, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for a public declaration that the city of Bella Beach, Florida is not a party to a pending lawsuit and establishing an effective date. This was brought by my Vice Mayor, uh, Gaddis. This is a resolution clarifying that the city is not a party to Manzo v. Town of Belle Shore lawsuit. First, do I have a motion? So moved. Gaddis motion, makes the motion?
Second.
Second was, I'm sorry, read this one. I'm gonna call a point of order right now. Um, that is Manzo versus Town of Belle Shore, and there's potential, uh, conflict with me chairing this. I'm gonna turn to the city attorney and have... I'm gonna turn to the city attorney and ask him for a discussion of the potential conflict, and then I'll make my decision as to what I will do in terms of passing the gavel.
Prior to the meeting, I discussed with Mayor Manzo, section one twelve point three one four three subsection three A, which relates to conflicts of interest, and both him and I, in discussing it, agreed that the, well, first coming at the standard, the standard that is in that section relates to a private gain, and him voting on this issue will not result in a private gain to him. So he, based on that statute, he should vote on this issue. Having said that, he has made an independent inquiry related to his ethical standing on this particular case, and it's my understanding that he will remove himself from the discussion based on the ethical advice he's been given by, I assume, someone at the commission on ethics.
That is correct, Mr. Riley. So first, I agree with your interpretation of section one twelve. This is not a voting conflict for me. This does not in order to my benefit in any way, shape, or form. I don't even know that it's necessary, but I'm going to say that at this point in time, I am going to recuse myself. And I'm doing it on advice of ethics council from the state of Florida, okay? Ultimately, the people that would decide if there's an ethics problem. And I need to put in the record why I'm doing what I'm doing, so bear with me. Patty, this is to go in verbatim, and you will be getting a Form eight after, maybe after this meeting or sometime this week. I have fifteen days to get it to you. So on June fifth, June seventh, two thousand twenty-one, city council agenda item eleven is consideration of resolution 2021, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, providing for a public declaration that the city of Bel Air Beach is not a party to the pending lawsuit Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore, and establishing an effective date. There is no conflict under section one twelve, three, just under section one twelve, okay? However, part of the law of the state of Florida is when there is any perception of a conflict. Even if somebody can get it wrong, which they would if they said this was a conflict, you need to step aside. Or you should, that's the best practices. And that's what I was told by council from the Division of Ethics, and that's what I'm gonna do. The section referenced is section two eighty-six point zero one two, it's extension based on appearance of impropriety. I am the sole plaintiff in that lawsuit, there is no one with me at this time. I brought that as a private individual and not as mayor. At this point, I'm going to step aside for this only. I'm not designing as mayor, so I will be handling the next item on this schedule, which will be item twelve. So I'll be back for that, I know you'll miss me for this, but I'll be back. Now, I need to pass the gavel. Under the rules here, Mr. Vice Mayor would normally take the gavel, but the vice mayor made this motion, so you can't really run your own motion. And we just came into play with that with regard to, because I just got the right to make my own motion, so we said you had to pass the gavel. So when the vice mayor can't do it, I must go to the next senior person on the council. It doesn't define it, Mr. Riley, what it means by senior, but I think it goes by longevity and service to the community on council. And I believe that would be Leslie Mataro, having completed two, at least three terms that I know of on council. I think she's in her fourth term, if I'm not mistaken. So that senior to anyone else here, because I think Glenn Gunn has two, and everybody else is on their first term. So I will pass the gavel to Leslie Mataro unless I'm told otherwise.
I do have a question about that. Actually, I just requested the resolution, I have not made a motion.
No, you did make the motion, that's why you just brought this to discussion. Motion by Dave Gaddis.
Can you undo this motion? Somebody else make it?
Nope, you have the motion.
That's right.
So Leslie? I'm giving it to you, you're not keeping it, you're just getting it for whatever the discussion is. There you go. Now, just give me a minute, I'm gonna sit, Mr. Reese, is the conference room open?
Open.
I'm gonna sit in the conference room, okay? And somebody can't make a conclusion of this.
We have a motion on the table by Vice Mayor Gaddis the second from Rita. Discussion among council? Donuts?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I have a lot of problems with this.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Wouldn't Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis get the first opportunity to speak since he's made the motion? So I just wanted to double check on that.
Okay, this on the outside appears to be something controversial, but it's really not. Basically, we have a mayor who, as a private citizen, is suing another city, a neighboring city. Anyone that is not intimately familiar with this case would automatically assume that it was the city of Bel Air Beach that is suing the town of Bel Air Shore. Also, across the street, there's been signs rallying the public to join in on the lawsuit, which is directly across the street from City Hall. Yet another example of it looks like the city of Bel Air Beach is suing the city of Bel Air Shore. This is not true, and the city is not involved in that. I have really no opinion, one way or the other, on that particular case and what's happening. However, I do have problems whenever residents from other cities and within our own, they come to me and they say, why is your city, or why is our city suing that city? And I have to stop and explain. I only come in contact with so many people in a day. Okay, that means that there's no telling how many people that don't have correct information, and they're just making gross assumptions that this city is suing another city. Therefore, I ask this resolution to be written, and I ask all of you to stand behind me with this clarification. This is not a for or against a lawsuit. This is strictly for clarification that we are not part of that lawsuit. That's all it's about. Whether we're part of it or not part of it, real property owners is defining the recital of interlocal agreement. Makes us part. People that live between First Street and I would say Sixteenth, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody who lives beyond Sixteenth Street, they're pretty much aware of who's suing and why the suit exists. I have a problem with city council not doing something to protect the citizens of Bel Air Beach between First and Sixteenth Street, and like I said, don't hold me to Sixteenth Street. That we haven't tried to file a temporary restraining order against the shady winds, that we bury our heads in the sand literally on this topic, okay? This is a health concern. This is a private, this is a public beach portion that you can't erect a shade structure. It flies in the face of the public trust doctrine of the state. It also flies in the face of Article one ten, section eleven, the state constitution. All right? I want to be a good neighbor. But good neighbors have to be good neighbors together. Now, going back, maybe our attorney can help us. I've read all the minutes, they were virtual minutes back last year because of the COVID. You spoke, had a town meeting, Mr. Gunn spoke, the mayor spoke. Now we bring a resolution in front of them. Does that interfere with the sunshine? Because not all councils spoke at that time. There's council members that are no longer.
Excuse me, I did not speak at that meeting.
Well, there was three meetings that I believe you were recorded on.
In Bel Air Shore?
Yes.
No.
I'm wrong, I'm wrong if I read the minutes wrong. But what I'm saying is that other council members spoke. We have citizens here that have expressed that beach is an important asset to our property now. All right, and it is, and it's one of the reasons, probably the main reason, I moved here. All right? I really believe telling people we're not part of this lawsuit is immaterial. It doesn't need to be said, okay? What needs to be said is, what are we doing to protect the citizens of Bel Air Beach against the harmful rays of the sun, the infringements of their rights, my rights? And that's where I have a big concern about. That's all.
I'd like to say something as well. I have to, Vice Mayor Gaddis, been approached by many people. A lot of new residents in town that have for contact, who are encouraged to join this thing. A lot of them do feel that this entire lawsuit is Bel Air Beach against Town of Bel Air Shore. And I agree with this 100%. We need to step up and say we're not part of it, because this could cost the city tons of money on legal fees getting involved in all of this. All of this would have probably been resolved if everybody would have backed off at the time the city manager was given direction to work with that community, to get the umbrella game removed or at least accepted in the accesses. They couldn't speak about it because they'd already received intent to sue us from two citizens, and then the third one filled out theirs as well. But we need to stand up, and we're not saying we're not here to protect our citizens. We're saying we're not here to get involved in this lawsuit that we have no part of. And if it works its way out, then that's fine, that's with the people that are suing. But I am with Vice Mayor Gaddis 100% on this.
When the city manager was directed by council, he was approaching Bel Air Shore's to put umbrellas up in between the barriers with their streets, all right? That's ridiculous, all right? Anything from the high water means more, okay? West is public beach. If you really want to get into it, there's a Supreme Court case, stop the beach renovation, okay? Bel Air Beach Shore's has never taken a nourishment in our government. If they didn't take a nourishment, okay, what's they having? They've now taken sand from Indian Rocks Beach and Bel Air Beach. Anyone after the renovation has pictures of the beach, okay? You see this, I call it a crater, all right? Gradual storms will fill in that crater. Gradual movement of the oceans will fill in that crater. Where is that sand coming from? Public sand, okay? So they taking the public sand, and now they're saying, stay off it, after we've paid for it. This is just bad behavior, and it's not good behavior by one town to another. The other thing is, back in two thousand and eighteen, they had no problem when the red tide came in by using the county to clean up their beach, all right? With the dead fish. I witnessed a front end owner and two labors picking up dead fish on their property, on their so-called property. Now, Justice Scalia back in two thousand and ten wrote in that decision, if you're a beachfront owner, you have the responsibility to maintain that beach. If you don't, and you lose it by an erosion, a hurricane, all right? That land is gone forever. So if you really want to get into this, look at the ECL line, conversion control room. They might not own anything west of that bulkhead or beach, beach bulkhead. And like I said, the behavior here, if you read into the minutes, I find this is just bad behavior on one part. And I don't know why we just keep cow-talented. I really don't.
Can I say something next? I agree with you. I think this is useless, because to me, if you want clarity, it says, Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore. I'm no lawyer, said that many times. To me, as a doctor, I can read this and say, Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore. Does it ever say, Manzo happens to be a resident of Bel Air Beach? It's not confused at all. I think this, you guys are always talking about wasting money, wasting Attorney Riley's time, and using it for no good reason. Here's an example, waste of our attorney's time and our money on something that doesn't need to be clarified, because it says, Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore. And I mean, who knows, maybe something will happen, and in a couple months, Bel Air Beach will decide to get involved. So does this do something against us and that happens? So I just, again, I'm black and white, so, Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore, no set.
Thank you, Doug. Go ahead. You haven't had a shot.
You know, either way, this train has left the station. I mean, whether you go with it or whether you don't, association has been made. I find it so interesting and to the point of irony that we're concerned about perception that we have to pass the gavel, and yet the mayor says he can take off his mayor hat and sue a neighboring city as a resident and an individual. Well, then, to me, the litmus test is any council member to take off his council member hat and have a shade discussion with another council member as a resident. I mean, do you see the irony here? I mean, when you become an elected official, the view is you are an elected official. You don't just take off your hat and say, it's, you have, you have citizen and individual rights as a resident. But it's a very fine line. And to say, okay, well, whereas Joseph Manzo serves as mayor of the city of Bel Air Beach, Joseph Manzo, his individual capacity, and I think he should probably read as a resident. This, it's moved, this thing has left the station, the perception is there anyway. So I mean, I understand the point trying to be made, but I'll support it either way.
All right, first off to Dr. Aki, the, you just read something that many people have not seen or have heard of. All I hear of is Bel Air Beach. So you just proved my point about it needs to be known, who is suing who. This is not the city of Bel Air Beach, no matter how bad you want it to be, that it's not. This is the mayor suing Bel Air Shore. So. Correction. It's not the mayor.
Right.
Okay? It's five citizens. Joseph Manzo, right. Yes. It's not named as a. Even my perception, I forget, it's so blurry and blurry. So.
You made my point, because that would mean if we pass this, that somebody would have to read this in order to be clarified that it is Bel Air Beach. Do you see what I'm saying?
It will be read, I'm sure.
Well, then you could say, hey, but in the minutes, it's Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore. I'm sure somebody's on Nextdoor, put it on Nextdoor, done. That's all, five seconds.
Did you have a mission? Any more?
I just have one question, what's the anticipated difference in the end result if the city sues the Town of Bel Air Shore or moves forward as an individual? What's the difference in the anticipated outcome?
The truth?
I don't think so either. So I'm, I disagree. I believe. I understand in this perception, but. Yes, but I also, I also believe that at the end of this, no matter how it goes, we are, we're going to be damaged. The, no matter how it works out, there's damage that's being done. And the more that we, the closer we get to this, and we get closer and closer to that joining the lawsuit line, the harder it's gonna be to ever repair the damage. So, you know, I'm not saying that I agree with anything that the Town of Bel Air Shore has done. On the other hand, they are our neighbors, just like Indian Rocks Beach. They're right next door, right across the street, and they're not going anywhere. So. Who shot the first shot? That's irrelevant. No, it is irrelevant. You are playing the ball, you are not dragging me into this lawsuit. That's what you're talking about. You are dragged into this lawsuit. In recital number four. We're talking about this resolution, we're not discussing the merits of the lawsuit or anything like that. So let's keep it to discussion of this resolution.
So let's keep it to discussion of this resolution.
I would just like to...
Excuse me, Fred, looks like he has something to say.
I don't want to get in front of any city council members, so I would, when opportune, I would like to make a couple of comments.
All I wanted to say is, just a reminder, I know the mayor has stepped out, but he has set specific rules for people that come in here, and you guys are laughing and carrying on, and it's very hard for us to have a conversation. So out of respect, please let us finish our conversation.
I'm having respect.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I wanted to say, City Attorney Riley, go ahead.
Hey, I want to make several clarifications. One, this, the discussion is on whether to adopt this resolution or not. I'll come back to that. Section 2-63D of the city code of ordinances says the following. The presiding officer or, on the request of the city attorney, shall rule out order any discussion by the city council on matters that are the subject of any current or prospective litigation. I want to make a very important clarification. The city is not a defendant in the lawsuit, so the city is not engaged in any way in current litigation. We all know that, I'm going to say it anyway. Perspective litigation typically means would be a situation where the city has received a notice of a claim, and the notice of the claim is going to lead to a lawsuit being filed. The city has not received a notice of a claim related to that lawsuit, so we don't fit that category either. So I'm making it exceptionally clear to everyone in the room that, that, the section I just read does not apply to this situation. So that's, that's the first thing I want to state. Second is, there's several points. One, Joseph A. Manzo, as an individual, has every right to file a lawsuit to protect his personal rights if he chooses to do so. So, the fact that he is the mayor is, with respect to that, to me, irrelevant. The times that I have spoken to him about the existence of the lawsuit, he has always stated to me, I am talking to you, telling you about my private case, I am not talking to you in terms of, I am the mayor of the city. So, there's always been that distinction in the conversation with me, and that's what I have personal knowledge of, so I'm relaying it to you. The way that the resolution was written, it was written to be factually accurate. It is 1,000% factually accurate, and that's one of the reasons it's so short. There is nothing in there that is an interpretation of, in any way, shape, or form regarding the merits of the case. It is simply clarifying that the city is not a party to the lawsuit. And I used as little space as I possibly could to, to make that clarification. I will readily admit, this is an unconventional resolution in some respects, but I, I was asked to do this, and I asked Lynn if we were following the normal procedure, and the answer to that was, yes, we are. And I then went forward and prepared the resolution you have in front of you. So that, those are the things that I want to, to clarify. I will buttress what Leslie said. The, I would not, this is a, the issue before you is a narrow one. Should you approve this resolution or not? I would confine myself to the discussion of that issue, narrow issue, and the, the other, you know, merits of everything else, I would simply not address at this time, and that's my recommendation to you.
Fred, I have maybe a technical question. Do we need to change the approved from Joseph Manzo mayor? On this resolution?
I wrote this as I normally would. I mean, I have to tell you, this is now a personal comment, the, the, the things that at times I have to think through are astounding. So, you know, I wrote the resolution as if it was a normal resolution. I didn't factor in all the complications that have, you know, are involved. So, that's what I'll actually have to think about. I hadn't really considered that. I had no idea whether he was going to step aside or not. I'm glad Mayor Manzo called and got an ethics opinion, because it, to me, is, we, as I mentioned earlier, him and I did discuss the ethical issue, because it's something that he, he should be very concerned, not very concerned, he should address just like any of you should. And when there's an ethical issue that comes up, the city attorney should give advice. I did that of my initiative, although him and I talked about it when the agenda came out, and I spoke to him very briefly, by the way, which is an unpaid for call, so we can see it on the bill, you won't see it on the bill, because I would put it on the bill, but he, I told him I would look into that, and I discussed that briefly with him before the meeting. So, I, I have tried, just like I think he has, to do everything that is ethically appropriate with, with respect to him having any involvement in this issue.
City Council members, let...
So two things. So the initial conversation you had was that there wasn't a ethical thing, and then the state comes back and says, well, yeah, there probably is a perception.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, was the initial advice the same as when we got back with the state?
No. Let me clarify what I said. I, today, looked up this irrelevant statute. It's 112.31433A. I looked that up. When I spoke to him last Thursday, I said, I'm going to look into the relevant statute about conflict, because this relates to him. So last Thursday, in a telephone conversation, I, I brought that up, and he agreed that that would be the appropriate thing for him and I to talk about that. So that's one thing. Today, I looked up the statute. Prior to the meeting, I spoke to him about the, my interpretation of the statute, and my interpretation of the statute, that he did not have a conflict, and thus he should vote. Unbeknownst to me, before the meeting, and I don't know when, that he, he spoke and called a commissioner and ethics staff attorney, and he discussed with them independently his concern to make sure that he was handling this the appropriately ethical manner. So, when we were talking this evening, prior to the meeting, about section 112.3143, he told me he got an independent ethics opinion from one of the commissioner and ethics councils, and he was going to step aside based on the advice he'd been given. That's factually what took place.
Well, I beg to, because it sounded like it was different opinions here. Second point is, this was handled in the normal protocol, and yet, this is, the first time I've seen this, when I opened up the package, and it seems like this conversation should have taken place before we got to this stage, you think?
Well, I can comment about that, or Lynn can comment about it. You tell me which way you'd like to do it.
Well, any, anytime a council member asks for something, I try to accommodate. And, you know, it wouldn't matter who it is, council member, the mayor, and, and in the past, I have. You know, if someone sent me an email and said, hey, I want Fred to look at this, I've sent it to Fred to have him look at it, or whatever it is. Because I work for you, I think, if, if any of you ask something, then I should proceed with it.
Is there any other council comments regarding the resolution?
I just want to close with one. Your own mayor indicated this could be a constitutional problem, I put that shade on this. So he recognizes that this could be illegal, bad words.
Susan's comments, so this is...
I'd like to make one more comment, if I may. The, the one more comment is, in my role as city attorney, I have an ethical obligation, which I have, believe me, tried extremely hard to fulfill in being responsive to all seven of the council members. And I will look each one of you in the eye and tell you, I have made every reasonable effort, and then some, to try and be responsive to the seven of you, not one of you. And I will also tell you, at times, doing the role that I have is extremely difficult under the circumstances that we have.
Susan comments. Gentleman in the back, I think was the first one who's hands I saw.
Rich Shaw, 115 13th Street. Well, there's a lot of things I'd like to say, but I'm hoping with the judge rules and the interveners, I am going to be a critical member in this particular case. And I just want to remind you, you can pass all the resolutions you want, but if Bel Air Beach gets drawn into this, you're in it. You're in it. So if you want to rub the mayor's face in it a little bit, go ahead and have some fun. But if Judge Meyer determines that there is culpability on the part of Bel Air Beach, you're going to be in the lawsuit. So, say it.
Thank you. Please. Come. Respectfully, Ms. Woh, I was at both virtual meetings.
A point of order, you're not supposed to call out a specific council member. These are Mayor Manzo's rules, not mine. He settled them.
I'm addressing you because you said I was disrespectful, and I don't want to be disrespectful. I was at both virtual meetings with Bel Air Shore. Neither of you, well, Mr. Reeves was there, and so was Mr. Manzo. And they were not neighborly, and they were not in agreement, or even remotely wanting to agree or reach an agreement with us. That's number one. As Mr. Shaw, I was, I'm also a prospective intruder, and I have spoken to many residents who are shocked that the city of Bel Air Beach is not defending them. The city is not in this lawsuit, and you're not there to make a statement for them. Now, I agree with the, the council members that have stated that it is obvious the city's not there, it is just Manzo in the lawsuit. This, to me, is a meaningless, just a quick, meaningless effort and a waste of resources for a conscious pilot move of, it's not our fault, we're not involved. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I think you'd be called in.
Gentleman over here was, I saw next.
My name's Bob Angelo, I'm 101 Palm Drive. I've been here for about two and a half years, and I'm a frequent visitor to the beach on weekends, occasionally during the week. I'm finding it real hard to understand that this beach has been used for the past 60 years, okay? And this is just now coming up. There's such a thing called past presence, okay? How can you let something like this go on? And all of a sudden, last year, throw a sign up there, says, my seven-year-old can't have sun protection?
Excuse me, sir. The issue is, this resolution is not, whether, whether we're going to pass a resolution or such, the city is not a part of this lawsuit.
I understand, I'm just, I'm making a statement. I'm here, I'm also a signature of this suit, because I think it's wrong. I can't believe you guys are representing all these individuals that live here, and I don't think that it's right. That you be supported.
Yes, ma'am. The issue is not, is the resolution, it's not the merits of the lawsuit or anything like that. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for reminding me, and I know this is going to be tough for you guys. I'm Mary Shaw. I live at 115 13th Street. I appreciate the council, and all you guys do. I'm seeing a division here, because I see the people that are on First Street to 16th Street are supporting us, but there are people that, if you're on 16th and up to, up to the other, you don't have a problem with this, because you can have umbrellas, and we can't. And there are council people that definitely, I feel, are not on our side. This is Bel Air Beach. You guys are Bel Air Beach councilmen. And I'm hearing a lot of people that are not supporting Bel Air Beach, but Bel Air Shore. And it's kind of scary. It's very scary that you're sitting on the council, and you're not supporting Bel Air Beach. We're not, Bel Air Beach is not the enemy. And Bel Air Shore is not the enemy. The two council groups should get together and talk. You keep saying that we're being, not being neighborly, they are not. It's because the two of you guys, the groups, need to work better and talk to each other. And I apologize, I'm a kind of one-off, but I just hope that you would support Bel Air Beach.
I just want to say, for the record, I live off 22nd, I support Bel Air Beach.
Pardon?
Just for the record, I live off 22nd, and I support Bel Air Beach.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
I've listened to the comments back to, this is what I've heard. I've heard implied assumptions that it's the city suing Bel Air Shore. We don't have any numbers about all these people who have supposedly contacted council members as to what's what, numbers-wise. So there's been an assumption on the part of some council members, that's the case, you know, we, we're not smart enough to figure it out. I really don't know if this resolution is that necessary, because it's clear as day, it's already been mentioned by one council member. It's Manzo versus Town of Bel Air Shore. Something else that I've also interpreted in some of the comments, some council members have already raised the white flag, you've given up. And that disappoints me. That's not what I voted for. Probably the smartest thing I've heard was a question from a council member, new to the council, wants to know why injunction hasn't been filed against the city of Bel Air Shore. So I posed that question in general to the council. I've tried to follow this. I've asked questions about compromise dealing with Bel Air Shore. And this relates to the suit, why we can't have umbrellas, sun protection on the north and south sides of the properties of the parking lots. Bel Air Shore doesn't want to give us that. Now I'm hearing more about what that city owns and what they don't own. So, we're sitting here doing this, and we're just, I feel like we're just trying to push this to the corner. I understand what's going on. It's one person suing as a citizen, as a resident, not a member of the council. The other lawsuit, that's another implication. There's an assumption that that sign across the street has things to do with this. It's on private property. It's not here in the city property.
You're getting off track from the subject of this resolution.
But I'm done. I've made my point. But I still have a question that I'd like answered at some point. Why hasn't the council pursued an injunction against the city of Bel Air Shore?
Jim Vansgoys, Seven Street. First of all, when you took an oath, you took an oath to defend this city, including anything that comes before us. So if somebody's questioning you as to what is going on, and I know that the city attorney will tell you, you say this is a private lawsuit and I'm not allowed to make a comment. The thing says, and I'll show you on my phone, that's what you say to them, it's the city of Bel Air Shore versus Joseph Manzo, point blank, and I can't make a comment. Why we are going through all these hoops to basically, I feel, walk away from trying to defend by voting on this issue. We should have never, ever brought this forward to even vote that we're not involved in the suit. When in fact, I know numerous members on this council have commented on this in writing to people, which is now public record. So if this city thinks that they possibly will not be involved in the suit, I don't think so. Some point, whether they are or whether you try to denounce or say that you're not involved in this suit, you're going to be bought in the suit as a city. So suck it up and move the hell on and do the city business.
Any more comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Ken Blanch is 1021 Palm Drive. I'm just talking specifically about the motion itself. I wanted to reiterate what the council member said down here and try to understand how there's this perception that's out there that you guys are involved and the documents that are in place, like she pointed out, specifically says Joseph Manzo versus the city of Bel Air Shores. So if this document, this motion that you pass goes through, how is that going to change that perception to these same people? Are they now magically going to know that, oh, here's this other document that's somewhere out there that we're not seeing, but now we know that the city of Beller Beach is not involved in this? Because that's what I'm seeing, exactly what she said. You're going to pass an ordinance or pass a motion or whatever you're calling it, I'm sorry, I'm new with this whole commission thing. But I don't see how that gets out to the public so that the public knows. Do you plan on doing a press release that states this? I mean, how are you going to get the word out that's going to tell everybody, hey, we're not involved in this? I am, I'm involved in this because this affects me. You know, like I said, I'm right here where I'd walk across the causeway and go to the beach. You know, I can't go and hop in my car and drive somewhere else to another beach access so that I can have an umbrella to save myself from skin cancer. So this does affect me and I just wanted to, you know, say, I don't see how anyone is going to know this other than the council.
Thank you. Any other comments, sir?
Hi, Elena Servos, 1020 Spoon Drive. We're all very aware that Mayor Manzo is bringing this lawsuit and he stepped out so that he doesn't have to deal with the unethics of what's been going on. The whole panel is not sticking up for their people. In all honesty, he should have sued the city of Beller Beach, not the city of Bel Air Shore, for not standing up for him. He should not be suing Bel Air Shore, he should be suing Beller Beach. All of us, in our, in our documents, we have been deeded access to these beaches, which comes from Beller Beach. Who's taking that away from us? Is it Bel Air Shore or is it Beller Beach? Who's taking away our rights to those beaches with umbrellas?
Any other comments?
There you go.
The issue is, are we going to pass this court and it's clarifying that the city of Beller Beach is not a part of the lawsuit? I mean, you're acknowledging that.
Yes.
We know that, but we are not part of the lawsuit.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, maybe the resident should be suing Beller Beach instead of Bel Air Shore.
Left to counsel.
Two things. Mrs. Shaw brought up the point, well, the council should be working with one another, right? Well, yeah, that's what we've wanted to do all along and that's what was in progress when the city manager was trying to strike up some sort of agreement with Bel Air Shore. Then a lawsuit was filed and guess what happens when that happens? The shields go up, all discussion ends. And it's not only on this issue, it's affecting many, many other issues where we interact with Bel Air Shores. Budget issues, police issues, taking care of public spaces, that sort of thing. We're going to intersect, it's affecting a lot of different things. There's a lot of moving parts here. So, yeah, I'm tossed on this thing. Once again, I think that in some ways it's moot because I think the outcome is going to be the same. A legal decision is going to be made regarding who's in the right, who's in the wrong, where do certain rights begin, where do certain rights end. So I'm kind of tossed and I think I understand where the vice mayor was trying to go with this thing and I'm not ready to make a decision on this thing. I'm not going to de-germ this one. I want to think about anything I heard and I will toss out a motion to table this.
Can I make a comment since my name was brought up, please?
No. Excuse me, we're on council comments now. You're making a motion to table?
Motion to table this resolution.
Frank is seconding it?
Let me discuss.
No discussion. It's a majority vote.
Yeah, you're right. And do we need a roll call on the motion to table?
I think you could do my, it's up to you, you know, which we prefer.
My answer called a roll. Motion to table resolution 2021-06.
Councilmember Swob?
Nay.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Nay.
The motion passed to table, passed. Very, 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 very time. Okay. What do we do with the time? Doesn't, okay, it fails.
Four form of votes to pass any motion or any resolution or ordinance.
So we now have the resolution before us. Any other council comments before we vote on the resolution?
My only comment is going to be that if, let's say this passes, I think it's going to cause more confusion than clarity because now there's going to be a rumor that there was a resolution passed from Beller Beach about the umbrella thing. Oh, wow, Beller Beach is in this now? This is great! Oh, my God, finally! I think this is going to be way more confusing if it passes. Because like I said, then somebody actually has to read this resolution to understand what it's saying and if people didn't read what the suit was actually about the first time, then they're certainly not going to be resolved. So I think it's going to be more confusing. So if you're trying to clarify things by doing this, which I appreciate the clarification, but I think it's going to be more confusing than clarified. That's my final thing.
I have a couple of final comments as well. We certainly appear appreciate all of your guys' passion and your thoughts and your opinions. We're not, you know, dismissing it. But we also hear from a lot of other members of our community and we're not going to sit here providing anybody with the names of the people we talk to. But we all communicate regularly within the community and we get their feedback and we hear it. Now, just a little quick note on the perception. At one point, and I'm going to go ahead and state this, my husband was doing surveys on certain things and it was mentioned in council that people could be perceiving that that was coming from me and not my husband. And basically, asked if or insinuated and commented that he stopped doing that. And he has stopped on social media with that because we didn't want the perception that somebody would have thought Steve Swob is British Swob. So there is always perception out there. It just depends on how people look at it from one moment to the next. So I just want to say we appreciate your comments and all of that, but we hear from the rest of the community as well. So please understand that this is a big community, it's got sixteen hundred people. So we're going to get all kinds of different information and opinions and thoughts.
Well, I would just like to say, it's over three hours since this council meeting started. Numerous residents have stayed for this particular party. And it is sad when you have a service man who served this country, gets up here, okay? And because of people like you, I sleep well at night, okay? But now you're going to the beach and flying in and getting skin cancer. And this council cannot get jointly involved to protect you and everyone else out there.
I'd like to make a comment. I think, I think basically the litigation got ahead of negotiation and basically halted it. As, as councilmember Gunn stated earlier, I don't know how much clearer it can be. We were working, we were going through a process and trying to reach a resolution. I even, I recall speaking in this council meeting about wanting to go and negotiate and was advised by our city attorney not to go do that because, because it was the, it was the wrong, wrong way to handle things. And so I refrained, I stood back and others did not. And now we're in a lawsuit. So I don't know, I don't know what to say. Are we in a lawsuit or?
No.
What I'm saying is, there's a lawsuit. You know what I'm saying?
That's what I'm saying. This is perverse behavior on our part. I mean...
We're not, we're not in the lawsuit. No, it's not saying that, you know, a month down the road, somebody might sue the city, you know, that certainly could happen.
Does this open the door for that? Your term, woman, does this open the door for that now?
No. I mean, sure, it doesn't change anything. It doesn't change anything.
Exactly. So why are we voting on it?
It stirs hot.
We're clarifying.
They're not clarifying it. Who's confused out there? I know I'm confused at this point. I mean, this, I don't think it's clarified. I think it's going to muddy the waters more.
Can we go ahead and call for the questions?
Yes.
You know, when all this started, I mean, you worked on the council, right? So my concern is, you're making inferences that we, we may not have ever gone to a lawsuit. Well, we never allowed the process to run its course because somebody immediately jumped to the hammer technique, I'm guessing.
Why have to correct you?
Wait a second, let me finish my thoughts here. Because what I'm saying is, you're making inferences that we would never end up as a city of Beller Beach suing or going after injunction. You're making that inference and my point is, is we passed that law, that train left the station as soon as litigation was filed by an individual and the shields went up, Bel Air Shore doesn't want to discuss any of these issues. And, oh, yeah, who knows where this is going to go? Yes, no? Does Beller Beach become a party? I don't know. This is, this resolution is a statement of fact. If you read this thing, it is a fact. The city attorney wrote it as a statement of fact. Every paragraph is a statement of fact and its basis is factual. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
So, really, the question before you is, is this a factual statement or isn't?
That's why I interpreted it as a factual statement. Because of the recital, because of number four, the interlocal agreement, I don't believe it is a factual statement.
Well, and what, even if it's a factual statement, why does it have to be made? I'm a doctor. Do I need a resolution now for the city? That way everybody in the city knows that I'm a doctor?
I think we've all...
You see what I'm saying? I think it's a little much.
Can we call for the question?
Cut this off. Yeah. Last comments by the movement?
I'd like to call a question.
Okay. This is resolution 2021-06, resolution of the city council of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for a public declaration that the city of Beller Beach, Florida is not a party to a pending lawsuit and establishing an effective date. A yes vote passes this resolution and no vote does not. Patty, would you call?
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
The resolution passes four to two. It is after nine o'clock. Do we want to stand up and run around the block or something for a few minutes?
Can you set a time?
Nine fifteen. I've got nine seven right now, if you get nine fifteen.
We're back in session, folks. Please take your seat. Folks, that's you in the clarren, please. Item 12, consideration of resolution 2021-05, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for the approval of a seawall manual pursuant to section ninety-one thirty-eight of the Beller Beach City Code and establishing an effective date. The description is to, it's consideration to adopt a seawall manual for seawall specifications applicable to seawalls within the subdivision of the city. First motion. Looked by Glenn Gunn. Second?
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis. Glenn Gunn.
I think it's a pretty straightforward manual. I think it is pretty much generated from someone else. But it hits all the high points. It seems like it's more informational than anything else. And I think the devil will give the details and drafting importance that lists the proper references and ties it to that manual as guidance, not just an informational kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments?
Yes, I think that this is very, very much needed. Many people don't, they have no idea why their seawall is getting picked on or why they're getting citations, but this makes it very clear and it even makes it more clear whenever they're rebuilding. So I think it's a great idea and way, way overdue.
Counselor? Right? One thing I'd like to say, it's not, the pings aren't numbered in here, but like under construction and that. Again, back to, you know, if Gaddis is remarks, people get picked on it. When you draw a pipe and you draw a sheeting and use a whale head or whatever like that, that should stand as its natural surface, whether it's sheeting, whether it's kind of, should not be painted. It should not be any type of material added onto that to cover cracks. The pins today have epoxy on them. So when you're trying to inspect them and someone's building a house, they should stay in its natural form. We should, we should put that in there. We should, we should put that in there.
Okay. You have a suggest, I mean, you have a suggestive change to add to this or we just, because we're out to pass the manual tonight. So resolution passes on the first read, which is tonight. So if you have something you wanna insert, that's fine. If it's something you wanna give to us, then you'd have to primary the motion to table and bring it back when you have that insert.
That's the only thing I have to, I don't wanna go to table the whole thing, but I really believe that, you know, you put a seawall in, you have the chance then to cover the concrete, okay? Whatever it is, but you cannot add on to it later by painting, putting epoxy on it. The next owner comes out, does a quick deal with the realtor, doesn't see a crack or whatever like that, it can bang.
Makes sense. You can, okay, I can write to you. Your option too is to, I mean, you could always amend this. It's easy enough to amend, so you can, we can try to pass it tonight and you could always make, you know, you can bring a motion to amend it to add that paragraph in if you have suggested language. What you're saying seems to make goals, I don't own a vote, I don't own a seawall. I don't know much about them in terms of.
I usually put them in, but.
So you know a lot more than I do.
All I'm saying is, I'd like to make amendment to the motion to get language in there that you can't paint. The natural, the natural sheeting, whale head or whatever stays the same. That's just, that's a statement we could add to this. This adoption of this is the first step in the, to, because we're gonna reference it in the ordinance. So, you know, to amend it to just say that whatever the surface is, stays in its natural state, that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, it can't be altered by paint, epoxy.
Right. No alterations to the original. Yeah, I mean, that's easy.
I think to facilitate ease of inspection and.
Yes.
That's all.
That's the only reason.
So why don't you make an amendment, a motion to amend right now with, with the phrase of, kind of like you want it, I think Glenn gets it. And then we can add that amendment to this and vote on it.
What if we can streamline by just building that into the ordinance instead? I mean, this is just a guideline, but when you're trying to ordinance, you can specify, I mean, these codes are a bit of a process.
I'm gonna ask you your scene and wisdom to amend it. So, here you go.
Bring the amendment, you have to bring it. Bring your amendment.
Okay, sir.
Say what you want.
I would like to have in the ordinance, the natural.
We're in the.
Seawall manual.
In the resolution, a seawall manual.
Resolution, seawall manual, that natural state of any type of seawall stays as it is pre-stored. No painting, no alterations after installation.
Okay, we have a amendment on the, suggested by Councilmember Bankard. Do I have a second to that? Second, second by Dave Gaddis, discussion on the amendment only right now. I'm deferring to you on this one, Frank Bankard. You, you've installed them, you sold them, you know them, so it sounds reasonable to me, but yeah.
Maybe just, maybe just a short follow-on justification saying, hey, it's to facilitate ease of inspection and monitoring the structural integrity of the structure. I could've said that.
Mr. Riley, are you okay with this amendment?
No. No, because you're, you're not specifying what you're amending, what page. It's a multi-page document. I think it will be confusing and because it's a manual setting of policy, you're simply gonna create a situation where you'll have disagreement about what it went to. So my, you had suggested either approve it as is or approve it as is now and then come back with revised language at a later date. I, I think you can do either one of those. I wouldn't do it the way you're kind of trying to do it now.
So we have a, the city attorney has not recommended that we proceed down this line. We do have an amendment on the floor at this point. Counsel, other comments? Mr. Reeves, any comments? City residents? No comments? Back to council. Mike Bankard, you have last word on your amendment.
I'm finished.
Finished? Do you want me to call the questions? Okay. So the question before us at this point is strictly the amendment only. It's an amendment to the manual itself that would say that all seawalls need to stay in their natural state. For example, no painting, no alterations, no epoxy coatings, things like that. A yes vote will make the amendment and then we will see whether the manual itself passes. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for the amendment only?
Councilmember Aki?
Nay.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Notira?
No.
Councilmember Swope?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Nay.
Mayor Mantow?
Nay. So the amendment fails of six to one. So now we go back to the consideration of the resolution for approving the manual in its existing state. I had one question, actually, I may have two questions. First question is, was this manual prepared in-house or did we have the benefit of having other people prepare this for us?
Well, we had the benefit of plagiarizing it a little bit and adjusting. Yeah, it, it's a manual.
Can I ask who we obtained the inspiration from?
Well, actually, Councilmember Vee, when he was council member, brought the information to me and we went through it and I had the seawall engineer that does a lot of stuff around the area look at it. He said this is a good basis. So at this point, the code review board recommended that we make this, adopt it and then put it as part of the ordinance when we update the ordinance for the seawalls, which is in the future. So adopting it at this point is, you know, it's, it's fine, I think, to go ahead and adopt it. And if we wanna make modifications, we have time to do that because we're taking the, what I wanna call the, the code ordinances a little bit at a time instead of amandating you with, this friend and I discussed, amandating you with Tim and me. So, you know, it's, we're just gonna take it through the process.
So the second question then, and it's more directed to the city attorney. This has a lot of suggestions about maintenance and how you should do this and how you should do that and what's best, we think is the best practices. What I didn't notice and I could've missed this was a liability disclaimer. I don't want somebody following this manual and then something doesn't go right or they try and do something that maybe they're not qualified to do and all of a sudden they're coming back against our city saying, you told me on page 12 of the manual, here's what I'm supposed to do and you didn't do it. So I'm wondering if maybe, I think it would be a good idea to have a liability disclaimer, but I'll defer to you, the city attorney.
I think it's a good idea to have a liability disclaimer. The, the purpose of this was to have a policy in place and up till now, you've not had a policy and I, I think this is a good start. If this is something, the amendment, from my perspective, did not pass, not because it wasn't an appropriate amendment, it was because it wasn't specific. What I would recommend that you do is if you want to either table it and have the changed language put in that has been discussed and a disclaimer, that would be fine. If you wanted to pass it as is and come back in the very near future with additional parts of it, that's fine as well.
Can we pass it and hold off on the issues, Mr. Reeves? I mean, I have no problem passing it tonight with making those two changes. I think Mr. Bankard makes an excellent suggestion.
I would just wish you'd do that because if you're putting in place a policy, make it a complete policy, not a halfway over the famous policy.
I have my answer. Okay. So I'm, I'm not passing the gavel. So if somebody wants to make a motion to table, if not, we can vote on it tonight.
Make a motion to table.
I gotta co-motion here, so Dave Gaddis and, and, and Aki. Okay. No discussion on the motion to table. So if this is not being permanently tabled, this is gonna be very temporarily tabled. I would expect to see this at the next council meeting, okay? I don't think that, Mr. Riley, any liability will work. If you want me to draw it, I will, but if you have a standard one that you'd like to use, I mean, just a standard liability disclaimer if this passes, so. Patty, do we need to go voice, uh, do we need to go for the motion to table? You wanna go that by call, roll call? Yes, okay. So motion's to table, it's to temporarily table to bring it back for the next meeting. Councilmember Bankard, it's a consideration in mind. Does anybody else have any considerations that haven't been brought up? I didn't go to the city, let me just do it. Any city concerns? All right, we're back, let's, let's.
I got it.
Yes?
I just wanna make sure I'm clear. So we're gonna table this tonight, then we come in with additional language that Councilmember Baker wanted and the disclaimer that you're gonna write, correct? And then we can look at it again in July. I just wanna make sure I'm clear that those two changes will be put in there, that he'll do the amended verbiage and you're gonna do the disclaimer. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding. Okay, so a yes vote will table this temporarily for one session. Mr. Riley, is there's enough time on that, right, to make the revision?
That one should be easy.
Well, it would be, I just wanna check. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notira?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Mantow?
Aye. So the motion is tabled for one meeting to make those two changes and we will bring this back and it should pass. Okay. Item 13, it is request the city council ratification of purchase of additional asphalt for a paving project and approval of a budget amendment. The city manager brought this. There was new curbing on the project that required additional asphalt to ensure positive drainage and we got hit with thirty-some thousand, as I recall, of extra upcharge. So first, the motion?
So.
Yes, Swope makes the motion. Again, second, Dave Gaddis, was it? Yes, Swope.
I'll defer to the city manager.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes, Mayor, council, this is a request to ratify the purchase. I authorized the purchase to go forward in accordance with the city code, section 2-351, feeling that stopping the project in the middle of the process would not be beneficial to the city and would cause us to incur additional mobilization costs to the city. I do have Mark here from Ajax Paving, if you have any questions concerning how, what happened with the paving and he can explain it, the leveling thing that we had to put in Bellview Estates Island and that's why the additional payment.
Mr. Mark, would you please come up here? I, I would like just a brief explanation just for the citizens' benefit. You know, it's not often that we do have overages and most of the times these things are always in under budget, but this one is a, it's a bigger one, so we just wanna take a look at it, so if you would, please.
My name is Mark Miller with Ajax Paving.
And Mark, you gotta speak right into that mic and you can actually bring that up a little because you're about six foot three and they're not gonna catch you there.
My name is Mark Miller with Ajax Paving.
Go right ahead. Just a brief explanation to council in, you know, somewhat layman's terms about why this hap, you know, what's happened and what was at work over here to cause this.
Well, Ajax got a PO from the city to build one inch of asphalt and replace one inch of asphalt. They hired a second contractor to come in and put new curb in. And because the existing curb was so flat, they had to raise it halfway between the elements and to encourage positive flow. So when we did that, we, we had to meet that new elevation and we had to take the ground out to the middle of the road, which incurred additional asphalt.
Very well explained. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
How much equipment did you have on the job?
Oh goodness. Uh, paver, three rollers, about seventy pieces.
So you remove that and wait for us to make a decision. You would've had transportation in and out?
Yeah, we've had mobilization costs.
Thirty-two thousand, I heard, that's what we took.
Yes, sir.
Any other council questions? Stay up there one second, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna come back to council, but does any citizens have any questions while we have them here? Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight, we appreciate that. And I think, from what I saw, it was a really nice job, so it looks like a really good job. I think the residents were pretty happy from what I heard, so, thank you. Okay, back to council. Any comments? Mr. Reeves, you called me and explained this to me after the fact and as I told you, I did not have an issue with this given what we just heard. You know, and I gotta tell you, most of the times you bring us projects that are always, for the most part, under budget, okay? Once in a while they do go over, this one's explainable. I have zero problem with this. It was a good decision to move forward with it. I, you know, we could've mobilized the council for this, but I have a pretty good feeling this'll be approved tonight, so. And if it's not, it doesn't matter, you're gonna pay the bill anyway, so it's gonna have to be approved. Any other council comments? Citizen comments? Back to council. Last word, Reed Swope, Benny?
Uh, no, go ahead and call the questions.
Will do. So this is a request to, to the city council to ratify the purchase of additional asphalt for the paving project and approval of a budget amendment made by the city manager. Price was thirty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars. A yes vote or an aye vote is going to pass this. I'll do this by voice vote and, right, yep, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's seven to zero, it passes. All right, item 14, consideration of an encroachment easement bond between the City of Beller Beach, Florida, municipal corporation of the state of Florida and Michael Potoff and Patricia Potoff. First motion. So. Dave Gaddis?
Second.
Second, Leslie Notira, Dave Gaddis.
For to the city manager.
Okay. Mr. Reeves?
Yes, Mayor, council, in the seventies, the city took, or took possession of submerged lands and in those years, people filled their lots before there were seawalls. And basically, the property, if you look in the survey section, exhibit A, the green area at one time was considered submerged lands in the city. And this, this has happened to almost every property from First Street all the way to Ninth Street, but it gets smaller and smaller. The property just to the north of this, a couple of years ago, had the same issue when the title company came back and said, well, hey, that's not part of your property. So the city at the time developed an encroachment agreement allowing them to utilize the property. And that's really what this is. We're not giving them the land, we're just allowing them to use it because it is their backyard. And what this was, as I said, was created by is because at the time, it was probably water and people came along in the early years of the city and just kept putting dirt in and dirt in and dirt in and they got a little more land. And so this is a way to, to correct the situation for the property.
I'm missing something here. They filled the land, our land.
Not, not this property.
I understand that. This happened twenty, you said twenty years ago. They filled, prior owners filled the land, our land, took it over adversely, built a swimming pool, a dock, pavers. And now we wanna give it to them free of charge to use in perpetuity. We just heard earlier about perpetual easements and, well, some people may wish there wasn't perpetual easements, but there are. So we're giving this to them, it's perpetual easement, which means we're giving it away, folks, forever. You never can come back and take it. But yet it's our land and I'm wondering, is there an easement by prescription at this point? I'm talking legal stuff, the turn, the city attorney knows what I'm talking about here. What are we doing here? Because I don't see us getting anything out of this. I'm, I don't know these people. I, I have, it's not, I have no axe to grind with them one way or the other. I went to visit the property today, it looks like a beautiful backyard, but I mean, how many of these are there in this city and how much property is currently ours and why are we giving it away? So that's three questions.
Well, if, if you start at First Street and you look at the submerged land in property appraisal, you'll see the line gets skinnier and skinnier and skinnier as it goes north here, up to about Ninth Street and it runs back into the seawall. And this situation happened with the property, as I said, to the north and two, two plus, maybe three years ago, I think Councilmember Notira was on, I don't know. two plus, maybe three years ago, I think councilmember Natero was on, I don't know, uh, were you on? No, okay, so it must have just happened just before that. And, uh, there was a title issue. So, this is the exact same document that we utilized then, other than Fred gave some updates to it.
I'm gonna defer to the city, I'm gonna hear what the city attorney has to say. I'm just not in favor of giving away any ownership interest in any land that's rightfully the city. Now, that doesn't mean we have to go after these folks and tell them to rip down the pool, that would probably not be right. Um, it's not what I would seek to do, let's put it that way, but we're, we're gonna run by us here in a quick, you know, nine-thirty session here, so I, I don't know if this is ready for prime time, but Fred Riley, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on you on this one, because please advise us legally what, what we're doing and what we're permanently, you know, giving the city, you know, giving away the city. And let me throw one more thing in there. Our city charter says alienation of lands has to go to the voters, that's the charter. So, whether this qualifies under the alienation clause, I'm not sure. It talks more about giveaways and sales of park plans and stuff, but it is alienation of land, I think, so I'll, I'm gonna throw it all to you, and here you go, this is why you make the big bucks. Or the little bucks, or not enough bucks.
I would emphasize not enough.
There you go. I'm second that.
This, Lynn and I discussed this. There, there was a prior situation where this is how the issue was addressed. The, as he stated, the purpose of doing this is to, um, help these people resolve a, uh, title issue. It, the, the encroachment is, is there, it, you know, there's no, to me, there's no question, but there's an encroachment onto submerged land, which is owned by the, the cities, it's within the city's jurisdiction. Um, you know, I'm not trying to get into a, a debate, but, um, it was submerged land, now it's not submerged land, because it was infilled, so if you returned it back to submerged land, I don't know what, uh, great value you'd get out of it. I don't know when this occurred. For all I know, my guess would be this took place thirty to forty years ago, and you're basically trying to clear a title issue, it's probably been in existence, my guess, thirty to forty years. So, um, is, is that, uh, the city giving away the land? I would say no, it's not giving away the land, it's not, not giving away the land is allowing the, uh, an easement onto the land for the purpose of, uh, accommodating these folks and clearing the title issue. That's the way I would look at it.
Is easement?
And it's something you vote, you, the city council did, there was a prior, uh, encroachment easement, I agree with Lynn, it's, to my understanding, this is probably a recurring problem, and, uh, the, my guess would also be that there was a time period where the, uh, title companies, when houses were bought and sold, probably didn't pick up on this, but this is, you know, I, I, I've dealt with a number of situations lately where, uh, due to the, the advances in technology, they are able to pick up everything, and this is probably one of them. So, I, I don't know that, I, I haven't looked into it from the standpoint of, would this be a violation of the charter with alienation of property? I, I, my gut feeling is it would not be, because you're not alienating the property, you're granting an easement, which is an interest in the property, and from a legal standpoint, it's arguable whether that's the, an alienation or not.
They have a permanent and exclusive easement in, over, under, through, and across the property, and we're excluded. I mean, there's a wall there, it's not like I could access that or anyone else can unless you pay my vote.
Well, I'll slightly disagree with that. In section three C, uh, it says they'll, they'll be responsible for the maintenance and make all necessary repairs, et cetera. Section three D said it shall be supportive to any drainage utility or communication easement required by the grantor, which is the city, to be, uh, issues in order to serve public interest. So, it, it also states that the city has a dominant interest, they have a subservient interest. So, from a legal standpoint, if the city at some point needed a drainage easement that conflicted with this, then this easement would have to yield to the city's need for a drainage easement. So, I, I don't think it's a, um, absolute thousand percent giveaway, I think it's an accommodation to them, and with caveats, which includes, uh, what, what is referenced in subsection three D related to drainage utility or communication easement.
Frank Riley, you said that, you know, it was a gut feel with regards to the charter. I, I'm not willing personally to make a vote that could potentially impact the charter, because if we violate the charter, there's grounds for removal. Um, so, I don't see any emergent need for this tonight, um, and my feeling would be for you, to get more than a gut feel, I would like you to tell me that it doesn't interfere with the charter. I, I really don't like this whole thing, but I feel a lot more comfortable if I know it's not interfering with our charter, because if it does, then we can't make that decision.
If it clearly does, then the, the answer would be no.
Right, but I don't want to put you on the spot to decide tonight. I, what I'm saying is, do whatever research would be net, you know, I, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you to research it, but if this council says for you to research it, um, then we can get conclusive, because we're all liable for our vote if we give this away and it's a violation of a charter. And I'm not gonna vote for it if I'm not positive. I'll call the vote, but I'm not gonna vote for it.
May, um, I'd be like to ask some questions to the city manager. Did it violate the charter at the time they did it before? Do you know of any charter issue that this would violate?
No, we, we, we did a lot of research, because I didn't know how it happened, and, uh, what, what happened in the seventies is the state, because of this filling problem, gave the documents that I saw, and this was two or three years ago, to recollection. Documents that I saw basically stated that this, the reason they gave it to us was because people were filling the mitigation, or the submerged lands. And, you know, back in the fifties, sixties, I'm sure there were no seawalls, and basically what happened, in this example, I bought this lot, actually, the, the park next to us, that's filled also, even more so than this one, so.
We saw the sinkhole today. We saw the sinkhole today.
So, that somebody at some point in time, when they built their house, they had a little land to it, they went down the street, add a little more land, went down the street, add a little more land. And, uh, as it, if you go on the property appraiser's website, you'll see the angle of the, the mitigation, or the submerged land that the state gave us. And, and that was the reasoning for it, was so the city could control this problem within people filling to add more to their property. But it caught up with, uh, uh, it caught up with Mrs. Lavenda, her husband, was it three years ago, four years ago? Okay. Same situation.
And at that time, they didn't find any charter issue either, correct? Was it with them?
No, it, this was the, it's an encroachment easement for them to utilize the property, we're not giving anything away, if it's our property.
I'm not gonna rely on Paul Marino's expertise from three years ago. I'm not, Frank Riley, he's our city attorney now, so that's where I'm coming from. Can you, can I be clowned on, I'm sorry, I'll be next.
The, is this gonna be a recurring issue, the properties in the north and to the south, are there also?
It, it could, if the title companies catch it, then it could be a recurring issue all the way down.
I mean, it, this, the implications are, you know, the due diligence kind of thing. Somebody buys a property, well, the first thing you do is you order a survey of the property and take a look, and, you know, if, if your seawall is twenty feet over to the north and thirty-four feet over to the south, wouldn't you scratch your head and say, no? You know, you better spur this away before I sign off and write you a check. I guess I don't understand how this stuff happens, and, so, it's the due diligence kind of thing, you know, all of a sudden it's our problem? I, I understand why you're trying to vote for this and try to make it easier for residents. I do have concerns along the same lines as any future interpretation of, hey, I've had this encroachment easement now for thirty-five years, why don't you just give me the property, convey the property to me, right?
Well, I don't, I don't think you can convey the property, but.
Well, yes, because of the charter, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the, and it's considered submerged lands.
Not anymore.
Anymore, yeah, exactly.
So, but I'm saying for the, for the property appraisal, that's what's considered submerged lands. And that's what it was when it almost came about.
Frank, did you miss it? Anyone else on council?
Question. So, if, I mean, obviously I won't help our residents out, but I guess I'm confused. So, now this piece of, if we grant this, this piece of land that gets tallied into their property value and they can benefit?
No.
No? Okay. So, it's pretty much they're allowed to just go?
They're allowed to go across it? There, if, if you look at it, yeah, it's not their property value or anything. If you look at the diagram, the, the space, the little patio, actually, you might get some of their swimming pool, so. No, it's not theirs.
It may not be theirs, but I can't get to it without trespassing, because there's a wall that goes straight to the water. And the only way you're gonna get on that property is to climb through, well, they got a dock out there, you can dock up at the dock that's not theirs, and you can jump onto the property that's not theirs and try and tell them that it's ours before the police get there and throw you off for trespassing, okay? Um, I, I don't like this, and I'm with, with Glenn going, I'm gonna agree with him, and he's agreeing with me, which is amazing in itself, but, um, I think we, we're giving this away, and the next guy's gonna come, and you got encroachment easements on our paths, you got encroachment easements in the park. That park, June showed me a park this morning where there's all, uh, all foliage and, and gardens that are grown over, and according to Marv Beam in the past, that's encroaching. I mean, there's no limit to this, we're gonna give away our city, and it is a giveaway, because we can't get there anymore, it's not our water, I can't kayak to this anymore because it's filled in, so it is their property for all intents and purposes. It's walled off, it's their dock, it's not like that's a public dock. I wanna dock up there, we've got no dock at Seventh Street, right? Let's go use this one. Yeah, that'll work, right? No, it won't. So, I, I mean, if, if this is the information we're given tonight and we wanna make a vote on it, that's fine, I'll call the question. If we wanna do a little bit more homework and get some better research, somebody can make a motion to table this thing, but, um, I'm prepared to open this up for the remaining council, comments, city comments, back to council and call a vote.
Hey, you're also telling me this guy has, uh, no perceived increase in his property value because of this? The tax appraiser doesn't take that?
That's not his property, it's our property.
Well, eh, yeah, we're saying that it's not his property, but when somebody walks out his back door and sees that extra six hundred square feet where the seawall is and the new dock and the swimming pool that's filled up.
But the city's allowed them, whenever, I don't know when it happened, the city's allowed whoever owned that house at the time to put a seawall in, put a dock in, they permitted all that, all, all of that's been allowed by the city over the years.
When did they move in to this house?
Well, they moved, moved, I don't remember exactly.
February.
February. Did, did the title company raise some concerns, uh, when they did the research on this before they sold the house? I mean, entitled? In the Lavenda's case, yes, the title company did raise, in the Lavenda's case. In this case, it was known because, you know, their neighbors and what happened, and, you know, so, we were just trying to correct it.
I don't know if we're correcting it, but I'm gonna come to city com, uh, comments and you'll be able to have a chance to speak in a second, okay? I'm coming to city comments in a second. Um, council, any other comments before I move to the city?
I have one more. So, how many of these have we issued in the past?
Just one.
Just one, and approximately when was that? Do you know?
Four years.
Okay. So, if we don't give them the same opportunity we gave those other people four years ago, then we're opening up another door that we don't wanna open, is that correct? In your opinion? Maybe Attorney Riley can answer that.
That's not, that's a legal question.
Say that again, please.
If we don't do this for this couple, and we did it in the past for another resident, what kind of liability are we opening ourselves up to then? I mean, for a long time, all we've heard up here is liability, constitutional stuff and everything, so if we don't give these people the same rights that the other people were given?
Well, I, I would encourage you to, when you make a decision, whether it's this evening or another time, to act consistently, because it's bad practice and you'll have a legal issue inevitably if you are acting in an inconsistent manner. Uh, because it's an easement, you don't have to write the easement, okay? I mean, you, you can, as a council, decide you're not going to do this, and that is a possibility. It, since, my understanding of the situation is that there are other properties along the way, and it may have a narrower or wider, um, parcel, then to, to me, the, the most prudent thing to do, given the comments that have been made this evening, is to not go forward, it's to table it, and we will look at whether you are violating the charter. I don't, again, my gut feeling is you're not, but I, I recognize it's a legal issue and, and because you're going to, you may be asked to replicate this in the future, the good practice now would be to make sure you're on solid ground before you pass this one and any other one in the future. So, that's what I would recommend to you.
I mean, I agree with you, Fred, completely. I just wanna put a more personal note to this, um, I don't think it's their fault that they're in the situation, and I don't want them to be punished, because that could happen to any of us. So, I mean, it's, I, from the city standpoint, we gotta definitely, I think we should table this, but just keep in mind that these are people, these are residents, that they didn't ask for this, they didn't fill it in, you know, shovel by shovel to take advantage, and if anything, they're the victims here, so we have to keep that in mind too, so, just wanna point that out.
I'd like to make one more comment. Uh, Lynn, Lynn alluded to this, I, I didn't look into it, I have no, no idea on what actually happened. I will again, I said earlier and I'll say it again, my guess is this is a problem that in all likelihood was thirty or forty years ago in the making, and whether they have the ability to, uh, go to court and seek an easement on their own would largely depend on the facts of, of what happened in the past, and I, you know, I have no idea what that is. So, you are, again, going forward, the, the better course of action is table this, and let's make sure we get it right this next time.
Dave, did you have some? Yeah, I have a question. Um, I'm assuming that the person who received benefit from us four years ago is the next door neighbor of this house, is that correct? Uh, rolling north, does it form a point, and that's the end of this section of land? It keeps going. How many homes are we talking about?
It, it goes up to almost Ninth Street, and it gets closer to the seawall, and then it fades away.
Mr. Reeves, I'm gonna say, I've said it to you a million times, I'll say it a million and one, I don't care what they did in the past, and I understand there's certain precedent there, but most of us are up here because we ran against the past, the way this city was being run and run improperly. So, I'm not gonna duplicate an error, because it was done in the past, and it was done with a different counsel that I publicly made my comments about him. So, Mr. Riley has said, I think quite wisely, to table this for tonight, let's get some more research, let's get basic information. First off, let's find if it's within keeping of our charter, which allows us to even make a decision on it. If it's not, then it goes to the voters if we, if we choose to put it out there, um, and that we can't change, so. So, I, if somebody will, does somebody wish to make a motion here? Table?
I'll make the motion.
Dave Gaddis makes the motion, second?
Second.
Second by Robin Aki. There's no discussion on this, we go right to a, um... Second by Robinaki, there's no discussion on this, we go right to a voice, we can do a voice vote, Patty, right? Yes, we're good with that, okay. So if we table this, it's tabled for the information, for Mr. Riley, Attorney Riley will do some further research along with, it sounds like Mr. Reeves has quite a bit of information too. Maybe get better package to decide upon here and come back and maybe yea or nay. So vote yes or we will table this. All in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's seven to zero, the motion is tabled at this point. Item fifteen is request authorization to purchase audio equipment for the community center. The explanation is consideration of a budget amendment to upgrade council chamber sound system and microphones in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. First motion? You spoke. Second, Robinaki, you spoke.
I'll go ahead and defer to the city manager.
Yes, Mayor, council, we had this company come in, Encore Broadcast Solutions. They have a contract with Hillsborough County Public Schools that we can go off of. They came in and did an evaluation of our sound system because that's been a big thing, a big issue with the council. They looked at, they took iPad and stuff outside the council chambers to try to get clarity with, for anybody that wanted to call in. Because going forward, I think the council's direction is to eventually have the ability to have Zoom meetings for the residents. And so this is the first step in that. Replace the microphones so they're more of a spread out microphone. These speakers are twelve years old and they are tweaked a little bit better since they came because they did some adjustments on it that day. But replacing the equipment that we're talking about, I think will assist in improving the system. So I'm asking for your approval for this.
Mr. Reeves, you answered a lot of the questions that I had for this. The only question I basically want to know is, first off, the system sounds pretty good tonight, okay? I mean, I was sitting in the conference room and I couldn't hear what, but I could hear the voices. Now, in the past, we couldn't hear the voices outside of the back or where John Hanzig is sitting, which is the middle of the chambers right now, he couldn't hear the voices sometimes. So, I mean, I'm telling you, it's not audible clear across the hall, but I think it was audible all night here for the people who spoke into the microphone. So it seems like that's working good. I understand the Zoom thing, that was the direction where we want to go. But these mics right now, I can hear my echo in this room right now and I know it's projecting to the back. So I'm just wondering, you know, do these folks give us a guarantee that this thing is going to work the way we expect it to work? Because I don't want to spend sixteen thousand dollars and then they're like, oh, we can make a few more tweaks and we're up to twenty and then we're twenty-five. I mean, I want to know that this is going to correct the problem if we do this.
Well, this is, we went over to Bel Air to look at their system because they're doing kind of the hybrid with the Zoom and all of it. And this is the company they utilized and we had them come in. Actually, council member Ben was here the day they came in and they played with things. These speakers or these microphones are a little out of date, maybe a lot out of date. I'd have to defer to Vice Mayor Gaddis about that. But they also mentioned to us that our speakers are twelve years old and they need replacement. That day they were here and they did some tweaks on the system and I know Councilmember Ben was sitting in the back of the room that day. He was here at City Hall, I think, to sign checks or something. And they just happened to be here and it improved dramatically to the back of the room. But you still have to do this.
Okay, but before, let me ask you, Sheriff, you're sitting all the way in the back. Did you hear what Lynn reads before he shouted in the mic, he's giving me a thumbs up? So they're hearing it even if you talk regular?
So what they're proposing to do is a version of the, what I call the bar mic that we did an experiment with. This is a standard mic, they're going to replace the mics and then replace the speakers and then they'll test everything and make sure it's all working properly. So this is, this is just going forward. The council on many, many occasions has made comments about, let's improve the sound system, let's do this, let's do that. So that's where we're at.
We spoke last time about, because right now citizens have to come all the way up here to the podium and it's very inconvenient and they're not, well, they're kind of facing us, but it'd be a lot better if the podium was in the front over here and they were directly speaking to us, just like you would. And that's the way it is in every courthouse. So are we thinking about, I know you and I spoke about that, or is that, are we thinking about that?
We've got to do some more research about, because we'd have to drill into the floor and get it, because there is no conduit from the middle of the floor that we can take to that room, because that's where the system is.
Why not use a wireless mic?
Well, that's a possibility too, I guess. We did have the wireless here many years ago. I think you probably remember them, Patty, they didn't work very good. But that's not to say it can't work. The other issue is that's plugged into these screens and stuff. So putting it there, you're not going to have that capability with that equipment. Unless we bore into the floor and come up with the equipment, which it's hollow under here. I had the luxury of walking, crawling under here.
I'm going to be sort of ordering this thing because I've seen the incremental improvements we've made on this thing and I've seen Bel Air and what's possible. What I would like to see with that though is what's the end product going to look like? Are we going to have video Zoom so somebody can call in and council members can see it and talk to them? Are we going to have a podium there where people don't have to trip across the room and line up along the wall? I mean, what's the end vision for what this is going to look like for sixteen thousand dollars? That's all I, that's all I'm asking for this. I support you a hundred percent on this and I want to join the nineteen nineties when it comes to audio visual. Would you sure like to make sure?
Well, this is not the be all, end all. This is the start to improve our speaking, you know, for the audience to hear. It does work with the Zoom out in the hall and you can actually hear the person. This has nothing to do with moving the podium, but we can go back and ask them. And has nothing to do with, you know, we can do the video on the big screen back there, but it really has nothing, well, I guess that's a question I need to have more discussion with concerning that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm always a proponent of requirements based procurement. I mean, start with what we expect to see, what we want. Don't have the sound guy to come in and tell us exactly what we want. We're the customer, we tell them what we want, do it to our specifications.
Well, we did tell him what we were trying to do the day they were here. We asked him to come in to look at the system. We did tell him what the problem was. The problem was the sound, the microphones, the Zoom issue and the communication with somebody being able to talk for the council to hear. That's where we went first. We haven't went further, but if that's what you want me to do, then that's fine. We'll have to come up with a package and, you know, it's going to be significantly more than this.
This is step one, basically. And this, now I haven't seen the system. I started doing a little research, but I didn't, I didn't spend most of my time on this. But it's my understanding that this will get this out of my eyes. And everyone will still be able to hear this and we will, they'll pick up because there are multiple microphones in one single unit, whereas this is just one.
As I said, this is the start. I mean, the, you know, you want the podium? We'll talk to them about that. Maybe, maybe there's a, you know, for not much change, we just tell them to change that microphone to a wireless and you put the wireless transmitter in.
Is that power right here?
Yeah, yeah, there's power.
If you've got, if you can get near either one of those, you can have whatever you want, it just takes a wireless.
I get a wireless. Yeah, the wires are going to kill somebody.
I guess my question is, if this is the start, what's the end?
Yeah, good question, good.
Well, where the council wants to go. You know, moving the podium, that may not cost us anything, but I'll talk to them about that. You know, that's not a problem. But, you know, if you're wanting to see who's calling in on that video up there, that, we haven't looked there yet.
My eyesight is still twenty fifteen, that's better than twenty twenty and that screen's too far away for council members to see, who don't even have maybe that luxury of good eyesight. I think this council, my personal opinion, again agreeing with you who are agreeing with me. I must be freezing in hell, but we need to, we've had some disagreements lately.
That's the collegial problem.
That's exactly it. So, but we're agreeing now and that's a good thing. I think we need to spec this out. I don't like the idea of this is the first installment and I don't know where this is going because I would never buy anything for my house that way. I want to know, you know, we need to come together and say, here's our Taj Mahal project and we want wireless mics and we want to, you know, all this, that and the other. And then we can see what that costs and then we can cut it down to what we really need and spec that because I don't want to spend the citizen's money twice. I want this system to be good for the next, what is it, twelve, fifteen years we've had this system? This one needs to be good for the next fifteen years. And I agree, we've got to get into the nineties before we get into the, you know, two thousands. But I don't want to do it incrementally, let's just go there. I mean, come on, little bar bands have wireless microphones, they're not that expensive, they're in the music catalogs. I mean, we can redo this stuff and get it right where you have a wireless mic and people don't even have to come up here and cause all this trouble, you know? So, you know, we're in trouble with hopping over wires and stuff, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, it's sad that we've talked about this over and over and over again and we've gotten this far and we're not ready to take this step again. As far as moving the podium, when you move that in the middle, then you're going to have the gentleman running the camera where he's going to be getting their backside. And maybe we could just move it over to where a little bit where they're still angling this way. We don't need a courtroom type setting, so to speak. We just need to have them be a little bit further into the room. But otherwise you're going to run into an issue with him and then you're going to run into another issue with having more cords dragged over their his camera. We need to figure out maybe a permanent placement for that. But my concern is if we have discussed this and discussed this and we have sent you out to do all of this research over and over again and then we're not ready to make a decision, I am just confused why we keep doing this over and over again.
Can I add to that? Basically, I believe that, let's see here, labor and programming, do you see the cost of that? I'm pretty confident with charts like that, we're going to be able to do audios and no, we're not going to have a big screen up there that we'll look at. But I believe that we'll be able to interact with people. Now, I could be wrong, but you said you tested.
We went out, out in the hall and over into the other office and did the Zoom and you could hear it.
Okay, so you can hear the person that was out there on their iPad?
Right.
And it was nice and clear?
It was like you were peeking into the mic right now?
Having a conversation back and forth. And that's, I believe that's what we were looking for and what we asked for. Yes, the video would be nice, but at the end of the day, it's going to be whatever is on the moderator's screen. I believe that's how that works. So for a minimal cost, not for this company, obviously, we can go for video in the next step. Just a suggestion.
Counsel?
Well, does this plan include anything with these TVs? Because before they were used for presentation so the audience can see what we were seeing when we had our computer here.
What you're talking about, the TVs above? I think at some point in time, we've got to replace them. I mean, at one time I thought about taking these two and turning them around so they face the console. But, well, with COVID, we've got the audience back a little bit, so that doesn't have any effect.
Well, and that's why I'm so adamant about having the end product and vision because, yeah, I have no problem with the audio portion of this, but if we try to integrate the video down the road, we're going to find out that the audio stuff doesn't shake hands with the video stuff. We've got to start replacing amplifiers or running new Bluetooth and wire, right? I'm all for it, just baby steps. Start with the audio, but let's just spec it out far enough down the road so that the intention is to have video zoom in and see the council member, see who's calling in and that sort of thing. Let's just make sure that our contractor understands that whatever we do in the future is going to be fully integrated and work together.
It's all the sense in the world. I mean, because you buy a bunch of equipment. And to what council member spoke, this is the first time we're specing out this system. We've complained about this video and audio and the citizens have complained about it for quite some time, okay? It's no one's fault, systems get old. I'm amazed you got fifteen years out of the system, that's tremendous, okay? But it's time to upgrade it and I'm with Glenn Gunn. We're going to upgrade this, I have no problem. But I want to do it once and I want to do it right. And I'm not confident that what we have right here is going to work with this stuff. He's right, we're going to nineteen ninety, well, that's great, but we're going to twenty twenty-one here with Zoom. So I don't want to hear down the road, well, we really can't hear what they're saying on the computer screen, that's a different microphone setup. Wait a minute, tell me what, let's, you know what we're looking, well, maybe we don't know what we're looking for, but let's spec out what we really want and make sure everything meshes because the last thing we need is another closet of equipment that, you know, doesn't work for us.
Today, now maybe we can ask for like a two part system, like here's the audio package first and then here's the video package and guess what, they do, they are compatible, but they just do this first and then we'll budget for this one next.
At this point, I'd just table it and I'll go back to them and.
But that, yeah, ask for that, like you're interested in video down the line, but they have to talk eventually.
But I want to make it clear that if you want all the bells and whistles and I'm sure Vice Mayor Gaddis will tell you this, it's not going to be cheap. So.
This is nothing more than microphones and speakers.
That's right.
And then I guess programming that system over there.
Right.
Well, programming and installing and all.
With capability for future upgrades that aren't going to conflict with the ones we're buying.
That's fine, I'll go back to ask them. I bring you the culture shot.
It's not a culture shot, I mean, if we can't afford it, then that's fine. But at least we're seeing what, and maybe it's like any other project that you do, you have great visions and people want to build a house out of marble and then it ultimately gets built out of concrete because marble's just too expensive. But let's see what it costs.
You know, scope scrape creep and price creep, you know, we understand it, maybe you just phase it. Maybe phase one, this year, this budget cycle is the audio portion. Next year, we phase the video. But the game plan is the two are going to talk to one another. Don't start with a blank sheet of paper and design a video, we're going to find out it doesn't match up with the audio.
Well, this, what we did here was what the council, yeah, giving us direction about. That's what we did here.
We asked for a lot.
I think what's missing here is that there's no, there's no outcome statement. There's not, there's, we see that there's a bunch of equipment and installation, okay? What do we get with all that? What's it going to do for us? And maybe if you could get Encore to explain it in writing. Look, I want to sign off on this now, but if it's not right, whenever they bring it in here and then we're mad because we spent nearly twenty grand and it still doesn't satisfy our needs, that's a tough pill to swallow.
So, you know, table it, that's what I'm saying to do.
We'll entertain a motion.
And I'll ask them to come to a meeting.
That would be good.
Works.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, I did, yeah, second, second and third. No discussion on that, so a yes vote will table this for future investigation by the city manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Seven to zero, motion's tabled. That takes care of the regular business. We now move into unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor, a plea issued last month and you told me we can do it.
Yes. You want to pick it up here, you want to do it during your time. I think doing it here, we can discuss it, so this is probably a good spot to do it, so go ahead.
Back in 2000...
I can't hear you. That system, we should have passed the thing.
Anyway, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So anyway, I brought up an issue last month about buoys missing from First Street of Bel Air Shores to, well, there is one around 17th Street in Bel Air Shores currently. And looking into this, I brought up there was a permit issued in 2002, a joint permit with our name on it. We did the maintenance, we did this installation, we did the reinstallation that they were missing. Looking further into this, in 2020, we got a permit to remove unnecessary buoys, and actually removed Bel Air Shores from that permit. That all said, if you go back in the archives, and I brought this up because it's a safety issue, okay? If something's going to get hurt, fatal, whatever. Go back in the archives, and I want to make this as quick as possible because of the time. In 2012, Bel Air Shores noted there were buoys missing. I won't use the commissioner's name, but he says, "They need to be replaced. There are safety, there are safety need. They are effective in keeping boats out." He also said, "It saves one life and prevents a bad injury. It's worth having buoys out there." Okay, and some of the commissioners will argue about the cost. Fast forward a few years later, I'll leave the commissioner's name out again. We don't want to replace the buoys. It costs us about $10,000 every year. Bel Air Shores is only a mile long. Boaters know from the neighboring towns, buoys where the limits are. Which is, I don't know why we put locks on the buoys, okay? Anyway, and then another commissioner said, he agreed with that commissioner after being assured the town would have no liability resulting from a lack of boats. So going in, I probably spent a couple hours a week talking to Florida Wildlife and Conservation, going back and forth, back and forth. They said, "This is a matter of Bel Air Shores should reinstall." I brought up navigational orders below the low means high waters. It's the state's responsibility. He says, "It is and it isn't when municipalities are given the right to establish ordinances." Which Bel Air Shores has the same, almost a mirror ordinance as we have. Hundred yards, you stay out of the boat. That all said, he also said, "Who ticketed any fines from 2002 to 2020, any violations?" And I said, "I guess we did, since we were the property holder, or since we even held the permit."
Would have been the sheriff.
Well, the sheriff, but what ticket book would have been written in? Would it have been Bel Air Shores, or would it have been Bel Air Beach?
I don't know, you know, I don't honestly know what, well, actually, it probably was written in our ticket books at the time, but those were going to the sheriff's office for handling.
Right, and then they hooked a little bit further into Bel Air Shores with the shade stuff, and they didn't have an ordinance passed to collect fines at this present time. So, he said, "Well, most probably, you guys collected the fines for that 18-year span." That all said, he says, "Being such a small town, it should be the responsibility, if Bel Air Shores doesn't want to do it, to count it." Which is like pulling teeth, okay, off of the tire, all right? So I wrote to them, and I got a lot of, you know, nowhere so far, which I'm not going to give up. But it's apparent that we have about 300 homes from First Street to 16th Street where the buoys are missing. So we get more of the benefit than Bel Air Shores does, of their probably 18 or 20 homes in that area. Now, we're just talking about spending $16,000 for a sound system. How much would it cost, because I ran this by FWC, to put four buoys, one like at Third Street, one at Sixth Street, one maybe at Ninth Street, and one at 12th Street, since there's already one there at 16th Street? If we would pick up the cost as good neighbors? Now, to see if our neighboring town is really acceptable. They would say, "Sure, if you're going to pay for it, you'll do it." Or, "No, we want you to get hit." Okay, well, we'll see who's a good neighbor here, okay? So how much would it cost to really put four buoys in? Because he said it would be acceptable to put on the map four additional buoys.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find that out.
They're saying it's around $500 a buoy.
Well, the cost of the buoy plus the cost of installations. Yeah, it's maybe a little more than that. I think we spent last fiscal year, I want to say $18,000 or $19,000 to replace our missing buoys.
How many was that?
I want to say it was like, it's almost $1,000 a buoy by the time you do everything.
So we're talking maybe $40,000.
And we'd have to go back and ask for the permit.
He said the permit, there's no cost to apply for a...
No, 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 that's not the issue. The only issue, the person I talked to up there, was that they weren't issuing, once they're taken out, they weren't issuing any permits, so we need to...
Well, they're not issuing permits under idle speed. The statute was changed in 2020, the 327, 146. The buoy would have to say, "No boating restriction," which is even better. So...
Yeah, I know that, he told me that change still.
But I mean, ever since the FWC got combined back in 1998, and they did away with the Florida Marine Patrol, you only had the sheriff. You call and complain with the sheriff, the sheriff will not do anything, because they're saying, "We're its buoys." All right?
Frank, first, I want to thank you for how much hard work you've put into this. And you're being modest, and I'm not going to say who you spoke to, but I've spoken to those individuals about other topics. They're like, "Who's Frank Banker? Who's Frank Banker?" You're all over the place with this, in terms of your work, okay? And it's incredible. People have no idea the amount of effort you're putting in. And you've got my complete admiration for what you're doing here. You have talked to a lot of people, and I know it, okay?
I'm going to probably keep pushing this. Well, I hope...
Keep pushing.
Since I have other avenues I'm going to probe.
The way to get this, for us to act, to get a resolution, is we can do a resolution as a council, which you can bring, okay? And write it up with what you just said, seeing what we have to do. This council will either pass it or not. We can, at that point, that resolution can instruct the city manager to approach Bel Air Shore with the proposal, and see what they will say. And that, like you said, they have a decision to make at that point in time. In terms of rounding up prices, I know, having done the budget the last two years, and Lynn's in the process of doing it right now, there's been buoy replacements in our budget, so we know what it's cost, and we have a pretty good idea what it costs to do ours. Whatever it costs to do ours is what it's going to cost to do there.
Well, I don't mind writing the resolution. Is it appropriate to give it to Mr. Riley to word-spend it out?
Anybody on council have a problem with that? I mean, I'm totally in favor of safety, so I'm not going to say...
And I don't want to.
He has nothing to do, so he can have it for you probably at the end of the week. The consensus is yes, right? We're going forward with that? Okay, so Frank, thank you. Let's move it forward. It's summer season. Any other unfinished business? Fred Riley, legal, city attorney.
Attorney report. I'm, this evening, going to give an attorney report, which consists of two comments and then an observation. The first comment is that Lynn and I have worked, over the course of the last month, six weeks, on the recommendations made by the Code Review Committee, which related to changes and amendments to the ordinance. Lynn and I worked on two specific ordinances for this current meeting. The methodology we used was, let's do this a bite at a time, rather than one, you know, gigantic extravaganza-type ordinance that had multiple code amendments in it. I think this is a much better way. It's a much more target-specific amendments, and that's what we will continue to do. So I wanted to just tell you the methodology. My expectation is, next meeting in July, we'll have, you know, likely to have two more, and then we'll continue working through the program. So that's the first comment. Second comment is, I had prepared a topic called Future Amendments to Ordinances, and I was going to walk through that with you this evening. And my guess, it'd take about 10 minutes. I would respectfully request that, given the late hour, I postpone that to a future meeting. And if that's okay, that's what I'll do. Which will lead me to the observation. There's a number of things that this evening, the council has decided to continue, and table till for another day. And I will just make the observation. In many respects, that is a very appropriate way to do things, and I'll tell you what you already know. The city council, you know, due to the sunshine law, working with, well, working with Lynn and working with Patty, we have tried to prepare the things for the city council meeting that we understand are the priorities and that the council needs to address. Due to the sunshine law, y'all can't discuss them outside of the confines of this meeting. And there's a number of things, and I'll just pick the one that was recent memory in this meeting, related to the alienation of property. Those are things I, you know, just so everybody's clear, I'm not sorry that those come up, because those were relevant things. You're planning ahead for the future, you want to be consistent in your policy. And the reality, and this is the point I want to make to the council, I could have spent five hours writing that. And I could have spent five more hours researching all, everything in Florida law, and I, at the end of the day, could have given you a hill for 10 hours' worth of effort. I didn't do that. What I have tried to do in working with Lynn and Patty, I try, very much try to do this, is be efficient with my time, efficient with the focus of what I'm doing. And occasionally, there are going to be times when y'all discuss things, and an issue comes up, and then we should table it for another day. One of the, I don't know if it's a benefit or curse that I have to work with, is most city councils don't have two lawyers on it, okay?
Curse.
They, three. Who's the other two?
Two, I'll count you.
Council.
You know, most councils don't have two lawyers, and, you know...
And I stayed in Holiday Inn Express.
Sir?
And I stayed in the Holiday Inn Express.
I will say, in the spirit of goodwill, I have the blessing to have two of you on this council, although at times, y'all want to make me pull my hair out.
You've got a lot of hair. I'm not, that's not, you're not getting any sympathy from me.
So I'm just making the observation. It's not uncommon that things need to be delayed for another day, and I'll leave you with this comment. What you're trying to do, and you demonstrated this again, over and over again tonight, is despite, at times, what may be unconventional ways of trying to get there, you're trying to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens who elected you. So, that's my comment. At times, this is a messy process, but it's necessary to do the things the way you do them in order to get the best outcome you can. And I hope that's, one of the, citizens came up to me and talked to me in the break, and he told me I had sage legal advice and a calm demeanor. And I told him, I very much appreciated the comment, and I hope I live up to that in doing the role that I have. So, that's my attorney report for this evening, and certainly will stand in for any questions that you may have.
Fred, I, you know, I oftentimes find myself in the position of, you know, finding things and stuff in here. And I want, you know, there's not a lot of people left in the audience, but people will watch this tape. And I want people to be crystal clear about this, okay? I'm not doing this to say, "Ooh, Fred, I found something you didn't," okay? You could have three attorneys look at something and probably get five different viewpoints on it, because that's just what attorneys do. But I'm looking at it from one angle. Fred might be looking at it from another. He's trying to draft it to make it a cohesive document. I would say this, and I'll debate anybody on this council or anybody in this city. Fred Riley is an excellent attorney. Excellent. I would vote for you again if you come up again. This year, we'll look at your contract, and I'll be voting for you again. You're fair, you're smart, and you look at, and you work with people. And I think you have a very excellent demeanor in terms of when we get these hot-button issues on how you can diffuse things sometimes. So, I think you're perfect for this city. That's my opinion, and I don't know if other people have different opinions. But when people hear me saying something that, "Oh, we found this, or we found that," that's not a knock on Fred. We want the best law out there, because in the end, when we as a council pass it, I take ownership of that law. And the last thing I want to find is, three years from today, somebody beats it to the ground in a courtroom. I don't want to find that. I want to make sure we put out the best thing we can put out. And if it takes a little longer, so be it. It takes a lot longer time to fight the lawsuit. So, you're doing a great job as far as I'm concerned. I do have one final comment, but I want to open it up to council before I make my comment. Because it's totally different. Does anybody else have comments on Fred? And Fred, I'm going to, I have another comment for you. And I have to bring this up as a matter of public concern in this city. I brought this up to the city manager's attention last month. I did not hear back from him, I didn't hear back from you, but I didn't ask him to speak to you. So I do need to bring this up, okay? Earlier tonight, I had to invoke the recusal process, which is Section 286.012. There's also, as you know, the Voting Conflict Statute of the Florida statutes, which is 112.3143, Voting Conflicts. I did that out of an abundance of caution and on advice from council, from the ethics. But we have a situation on this council, it's been ongoing for a month and a half, which may or may not be a similar situation, and I'm not hearing similar recusals. So I'm going to lay out the facts to the city, and then you can do what you wish, and you can give me whatever advice you wish, okay? The situation has come up that our city manager has sold his house. And he sold his house on June 7th. And that's not a problem in itself. He sold it for $640,000. It was a beautiful house. It sold very, very quickly. I was told by a citizen that the house was for sale prior, because that was back in May, I believe. And I believe I did question, I said to, I spoke with you briefly on that, and he said, "Speak to the city manager about his intentions." He told me his intentions, that although he's not going to be in Bel Air Beach, he was going to be still with us. That was all I was concerned about, that he was going to still be our city manager. But when we went around the block to look at the listing sign, Rita Swope is the broker of record on the house, on the for-sale sign. And that raised a potential conflict issue with me. So I spoke to Lynn Reeves about it, and he said that he had utilized two bids for bidding it out. That's up to him how many bids he had. But the situation is as follows. The realist, and as I only know, these are the facts. The fact is, there was a sign in front of the house that was for sale, Rita Swope was the listing broker. That was a listed item. That was a documented listing. We have a copy of that listing. And the situation comes in, in that typically, the listing broker receives a commission. I don't know if that was the arrangement or not. I don't have the contract. But that would call into question, since Lynn Reeves works for Rita Swope and works for this council, calls it to question several ethics issues. And that would be basically an ongoing conflict. She does, and we do, the reviews, we do the evaluations. We just approved the budget change, or our ordinance change that gave the city manager more latitude. So, the question comes in is, do we have conflict of interest under 112.3143? Even if we don't, do you have the situation that I was in tonight, that there was no conflict of interest, but there's a perception of conflict of interest, 286.012? And I will tell you this, a citizen has called the State Ethics Board, informed them of the factual situation, and the response from the State Ethics Board was, "This is a matter of serious concern for them." So no formal charges, as far as I know, have been done. I have certainly not filed any formal charges. But it is important for me, as the mayor of this city, before we start going... But it is important for me, as the mayor of this city, before we start going into the budget season and having a lot of votes and them potentially being invalid, to bring this up to you and inform you of the situation, see what's the best course of action at this point.
Before you answer, may I make a comment since obviously he's, you know, discussing me? Yes, I wasn't listed agent, I was not a broker. My brokerage, I worked for them. So what you're saying is like Lynn couldn't walk into Dave Gaddis's company and buy a part from them because he was...
You're stating the facts.
No, I'm, I'm asking, I'm stating the facts too. You're, you're basically saying that my profession, I can't sell a private residential property because it interferes with something that you think is an ethics violation, which it is not. I checked with my broker before I listed it and it was not an ethics violation because it is a private property. It's not a city property. I can list any residential home I want to list. You're trying to mess with my profession now and that is not right and I'm telling you what, if we want to go down that road, woo, and you are incorrect on several facts, it did not sell for 640 and since you want to publicly state that, it sold for 665. And what my sellers do or their intent to do when they sell a home is their private business. I don't discuss that with anyone. But I work for brokerage. I do not have to stand back and say I can't take a listing when that's my profession. Everybody in this council knew exactly what my profession was prior to me running and prior to me getting on here. So, you're saying that we can't do any kind of business with any other person because of our city council? Then you're interfering with my profession and...
Okay, hang on a second.
No, I am not being...
I'm gonna call, point of order. You're saying what I said, but that's...
I object to your point of order.
You can't, you have no right to object.
Why?
Okay? I've called a point of order on you.
I know, but I'm trying to be polite then.
Ms. Swolke, it's not debatable. You want to pull out Robert's rules of order? You're, you're to listen and I'm gonna talk. You can't go to what...
I'm asking the city council without...
You're out of order. If you keep this up, we're gonna be here till 11 o'clock because I'm gonna adjourn the meeting and get with the city. Okay, fine. We're adjourned in five minutes. I want to see the city manager and the city attorney in the conference room to discuss Ms. Swolke's actions. And we'll decide how we're gonna deal with this. That's what we're supposed to make it three times.
I, I'd request before you do that, that I be allowed to make a comment.
Well, okay. I have a point of order, number one.
You certainly do.
And the point of order is, she's out of order. You cannot say what my reason or intent was. I never said anybody committed an ethics violation. I said, these are the ethics things that are implicated, is there a situation here? This is a matter of city business and her broker, it doesn't matter what her broker says, it matters what Florida ethics says. That's what's at question, not her broker. Now, with that, Mr. Riley.
My comment is, I would suggest to the city council that I look into this situation and then I will dutifully get back to the city council with what, what I, my review, whatever it deals. That's the only fair way to do that. You had briefly, briefly mentioned that to me a long time ago, I don't even know when it was, probably two months ago or almost a month ago or whatever, and my suggestion at that time, as you, you stated, was to contact Lynn and discuss it directly with him, which now I understand you did. You of course can't contact Rita because of the sunshine law, so you, you know, in an ideal world, outside of state government, you would have been able to go to each person, but you can't do that. So you did the part that you could do and this is another instance where, as messy as it is, it, it has to be brought up in a public setting and to be fair to everybody concerned, the only reasonable thing for me to do is to look into it further and not do that with a pronouncement after we've been at a meeting for four hours and 43 minutes and give you some assessment of the merits of the case. I, I really would prefer not to do that. And I think that's only fair to everybody concerned.
I'm not asking for you to do that here. In terms of people performing, doing their profession, you can perform your profession with anyone you want. But when you're performing it for your employees, that's where the issue comes in. And if that's not understood, then let's turn it over. I am gonna request that this matter, I, I want to hear what you have to say, but I would really like to see a written letter from the state ethics in terms of how they view this thing. Because if they are taking such a strict view that a mere hint of a, of a benefit on a, on a motion to say we're not member of a lawsuit needs to require a recusal, then I want to see what their opinion is on this.
Well, I, I'll make another comment. In, in my role, there are times when I know about a situation ahead of time and I'm asked for legal advice prior to somebody acting. In this situation, it's the opposite way. It would appear to me from what has been said, some action has already been taken. There are times that the lawyer has a, the ability in working with people, one, to understand what actually happened and secondly, to propose a remedial measure and I don't know whether that's available for some, this situation or not. But I am saying again, the only reasonable thing for me to do is to not comment further and give both, all people involved an opportunity to explain what the situation is and I will again dutifully respond to you in a, in the city council in a written format. That's fair. And fair to everyone involved.
I would like to make one final comment. When I did review Lynn, I thought I reviewed him the same as the year before, just so the entire city council knows. There was no changes except for his goals. I did not have a listing at that time. He didn't call me for an interview until way after that, so it did not have any impact on anybody's grades or anything that I did. So, I mean, you're trying to make something out of nothing because you're just furious with me. You have always been furious with me.
Here's your point of order, because you're telling me...
Fine, I'll take your point of order.
Right. And let me tell you what I'm thinking, okay? I'm thinking you don't know your ethics rules because it has nothing to do with it. It has to do with the appearance of the impropriety, the appearance of impropriety and this sticks. Mr. Riley, I'll be waiting for your report. I have no other comments. Any comments from the city for the city attorney? None? We move on to the city manager, Mr. Reeves.
Yeah, Mayor, council, I've given you a Beller Shore, Beller Beach comparison report under my tab, let's see, what is it? 18 with the sheriff's office over the last four months because I wanted to kind of update you on this service. We keep talking about what the sheriff's doing for us and what they're doing next door and there were, at last month's meeting, I thought there were some misrepresentations of civil items. And I want to just give you this, over the period of January through April, the city of Beller Beach had 242 calls for service, the city of Beller Shore had 12. The, I know there's, I've received several emails and there was a statement made about Beller Beach and Beller Shore and I get the impression, based on what's been, been said is, that we shouldn't be doing anything for anyone. Well, we shouldn't give City Hall away to our condo associations, turtle training, fire districts, Bell Airs used in Pinellas County. We spend over $500 a month across the street maintaining a pond that is not the city of Beller Beach's and the county gives us nothing for that. So, you know, I, this is just some thoughts that need to be thought about. The Gulf Boulevard money, there was a comment made that they didn't give us anything. Beller Shore gave us $795,000 of that last Gulf Boulevard payment. There's another 1,005,000 potential and I think I'm gonna have to go to Beller Shore and see if they're gonna give us that because that's for the Gulf Boulevard beautification. Our portion of that is $2,946,000 and they have a 1, 1.1 million contribution. And I think unless the council has a problem with that, I need to have that discussion with them because this is part of our Gulf Boulevard underground project and that's all the money can be used for. The way the interlocal agreement reads, it says that the funds can be given to Beller Beach. I've found nothing that, in the previous agreement, other than the same language and I have found no documents that say we did anything other than what we did. We took the money and did things down Gulf Boulevard for the beautification. So, I just want to, you know, let, instead of, you know, some of the misrepresentations, let, let's be clear, you know, Beller Shore gave us 800,000 for Gulf Boulevard, so, of their money. And I, I do want to clear up, there's been no lawsuit, to my knowledge, no claim against the city for any of the beach lots. To my knowledge, there's never been a claim. I think that was spoken tonight and I, I thought there again, that's just misrepresented, you know? There was a claim for, for...
Morgan.
Morgan, not, not Beller Shore. So, we didn't have any claim there, so. Something that's come up, the governor hasn't signed the bill yet, but if this mandate happens, it could cost us anywhere from 30 to 50,000 dollars. There's a stormwater needs assessment mandate and I've been following it, but so far he hasn't signed it. The budget was set at your desk tonight, so you can start reviewing that. The assessments for the Bellevue Estates Island, currently, the people that are paying 1,611.70 are, their assessment's gonna be reduced to 1,313 dollars and the 1267 group is gonna be reduced to 1,103 dollars in the next year's taxable assessment. And then there was four homes that were paying 418 because they paid part of it upfront. Theirs is going to 383. The audit committee, our audit proposals, we got two proposals, one from our current auditor and one from another auditor. The audit committee is meeting tomorrow night to go through those.
Who's the other one, Lynn? Who's the other auditor?
Was it Schnitzel and Hauser? And their bid, their base bid was 25,000, our auditor's base bid was 17,500. So, but the audit committee is meeting tomorrow night to look at those. The stormwater, the flood map changes. There's a girl in the county, Lisa Foster's been giving, going around giving presentations. I put a copy of the presentation in your binder. There's just really, I know Vice Mayor heard it in the big C, but just a couple things that I want to highlight. On page seven in that, they, 12% of, of the county firm map was, received a decrease and the beaches elevations received a decrease. As an example, a lot of the homes that were in the BFE 10 foot in this end of town went to eight foot. And then 8% of the county, which is mostly up in the upper Tampa Bay, the Ultmar area, they had a BFE increase. The county is, is, had, did a vulnerability study. This study was started in 2012 by FEMA. The county did a vulnerability study that started in 2017, 18 timeframe and their vulnerability and that's something that we're gonna have to discuss over the next coming months because the maps are taking effect August 24th. What the county's proposing is to add free board to, if the BFE dropped to eight and it was 10, then add two more foot of free board to leave it at the same. But that's, that's something that the city council and we can discuss further. If you go to page 17, they basically are saying, do nothing, accept the maps as they are. We were, of course, received our copies of the new maps and hold the line, the county's position or the Lisa Foster's position is, we should go with the vulnerability study is. And, and it's kind of mixed and, and I really don't, based on what I know from the meetings I've been to, I think the county wide, most of the staff feels that they'll get pushed back if they try to raise it too much. So, as I mentioned, currently, and I just use this end of town because the, the BFE dropped two feet. If you go to Belleville, Bellevue Estates Island area, the BFE dropped a foot. You were 10, now you're 9. And I've got the map available if anybody wants to kind of see it, it doesn't go into effect. So, if you go to page 26, the do nothing, adopt the, the, hold the line is adopting this, the county's vulnerability study and make the firm BFE and current free board higher to relate to current conditions or integrate new data for the 100 year and 500 year if possible, which means the free boards could... And just to clarify, what the free board means is, I'm adding a foot to the elevation. There are some cities that have three footer free board. So if your BFE is 10, you have to start your first floor at 13. So, that, you know, it's just higher up. The risk rating for, that's coming out, it's called Risk 2.20. They're starting to do some training on that so we can kind of find out a little more information because how they're gonna rate your flood insurance is gonna be based on this new risk factor. So it's a little different than previously when they really looked at what the BFEs were. So, just, just some information for you. Vice Mayor, if you've got any other comments that you heard of the manager?
You know, it's, it was interesting that FEMA would go one way and Pinellas County would go another. It's basically, you had conflicting information. It went down in one direction with FEMA and it went up with Pinellas County. And what Pinellas is trying to do is, they're trying to reach a general consensus amongst all municipalities that, that we select one or the other, or of these three choices basically. And the presentation was swift, it was a lot of information and very little explanation to go along with it, to back it up. So, I spoke with several mayors today about this and what their towns and cities were, had agreed upon and some went with the extreme high, some decided to do nothing and I, so far haven't heard anyone say, well, we'll take the new FEMA standard. That being said, they only gave us two weeks and this is the first we've had, because of sunshine, this is the first one that we've been able to discuss it at all. The problem is, every town that I've spoken to, they don't have enough information to make a good educated decision. So it's still, they're asking for more and I, I'm, I'm certain they're gonna have to come back and do another presentation. Maybe it's something we should look into.
They are because the, part, part of the problem is, the FEMA did this vulnerabilities, the county did the vulnerability study years later from the time that FEMA started, so... And the new insurance risk rating system is gonna change how they rate as opposed to what they do now and we haven't got clarification on that. As an example, and I'm gonna use my former house, it was a 10, now it's an 8, okay? So... So, is that gonna make my forty-six hundred dollar flood insurance go to down? They're tell, they're telling us, you know, the FEMA people are telling us probably not. It might drop a little bit, but not much. Uh, so that clarity's gotta come out because, uh, that's probably the biggest issue with the residents is what's it gonna cost me?
Right. And, and what I'm seeing is if you, if you side with the study that was done, the modified FEMA standard, uh, basically, then you're agreeing that, oh, okay, everything new must be higher, therefore everybody that's lower, they're gonna get deemed to be. And that's, that's not what we want.
No.
And, and, uh, I think it was, uh, uh, St. Pete, uh, St. Pete Beach, I believe. I can't, I can't remember which, which town it was, but they, they said, yes, we, we adopted them both and we're writing it in our code right now.
Well, there are some cities, but, but as I said, there's a lot of cities that feel the staff, I'm talking the staff feels that they're gonna get pushback from the residents. Because, because of this situation. And, uh, you know, if it's gonna cost me more money or we're gonna start raising the standards, it's not gonna affect any house that's built now. It's only gonna affect the house that's, you know, built.
This is amazing. I, you know, I went, when FEMA was proposing these maps four years ago, three and a half years ago, I went to that hearing. I went, I went to their presentation, I sat with the engineers, millions of dollars, years of study, and we're gonna have local officials who know nothing. Oh yeah, let's put two more foot of free board and just invalidate their entire study. This is unbelievable that local people would just basically usurp the government agency and say, well, we know more than them. Yet don't. And I can't believe it. I, I can't, let, you know, let's bring this up here, but, um, I'd love to have one of the FEMA people come in and tell me how much research was done versus what one of these other city mayors have done or one of these other city councils have done, um, or the county for that matter, okay? I, I, to me, the whole idea that it was dropping and the, and the, um, the VE zones were changing, that's also part of this, um, is great, okay? It certainly changes the build, the buildability of certain lots and, and what you have to do to put an actual residence there. And it cuts your costs if you, if you become a, go from a VE to a A zone. And then for local people to just come and just say dismiss it, oh, we know better. You don't know better. I, I completely think this is absurd. I hope we don't go down that road.
At this point, uh, our ordinances currently have auto adoption in the map, which takes effect August twenty-fourth. And that doesn't mean that we can't change something later, but our, our ordinances have already been cleared by the state FD E, FD E M. Excuse me. And FEMA has verified that and sent back that, yes, our ordinances are good to auto adopt and accept the maps. But we can, we can adjust, so just because we auto adopt it, doesn't mean that we can't change something later if we want to. Currently, our building is set with the four building code. It's whatever the BFE is plus one foot, uh, the, what, what they're proposing, as I said, is well, maybe the city needs to adopt an ordinance that says free board, or I mean, BFE plus two foot or whatever it is. So, this is a, what I call an ongoing process and, and I'm not sure that, based on what I've heard from other city staffs, I'm not sure that they're gonna get a consensus on this. So, that, that's, that for now and we'll have some more discussions as we get more information. Last, last thing I have.
Hang on one second, Frank, you have a question?
Are you saying that FEMA's gonna redo their maps again or?
No.
August twenty-fourth, the, the new ones are coming out.
Yeah, so is the, is on the bigger flood role, is it going back to grandfathering for all this?
No.
You know what I'm saying? Because that shit probably sailed two years ago now.
Yeah. Yeah, no, they're, that's not gonna happen. I'm, I'm interested to see, and we haven't gotten any information, I'm really interested to see what this risk two point oh and how that works with the insurance to say, be able to say. And when they do start the training, I'll definitely queue in on it to find out. Cause I, cause I want to find out, okay, if this house was at this level of elevation, what's happening here? Are you changing the parameters for how flood insurance is figured? So, we need to clarify that and they haven't really done that. And that's probably part of the problem. We, we've got this county's vulnerability study, which says, oh, you gotta build a, you know, I think, uh, they said the VE zones, you gotta build a fifteen feet or something. So, and that's the coast. And, you know, we've got some issues with, uh, even condos in our city and their flood insurance. I think it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for thirty-two units, you know? And, uh, Mr. Baker talked to me about it last week and, you know, they're in a repetitive loss area because they had several claims at some time. But the last thing, sign replacements. We, we've got, we've gotta make a decision here. What, we're, cause here's what the insurance guy told me. I'm gonna give you four thousand dollars and that's all I'm gonna give you. Well, I'm like, that's the depreciated cost of the old sign. And I said, wait a minute, don't I have some replacement value? Well, yeah, I do, but that claim's been out there for a while and it's time to move on, so. We went back to the company, the modified signs, double sided, not V shape. The price dropped into like the thirty-nine thousands. But in the, I did tell the insurance agent, hey, give me a little time here to have this discussion with the council. So, I'm gonna ask at the, uh, work session if we have a discussion on that sign for the budget.
Budget session?
Yeah. So we resolved this because he's ready to give me four thousand dollars and I said, wait a minute. Before you told me you're gonna give me ten or twelve thousand dollars, now you're telling me you're gonna give me four. Well, you're not replacing the sign, so all I'm gonna do is depreciate your value. So, something to ponder. As I said, you've got the, the budgets, you've got the backup, uh, and, uh, the work session is on the twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And, uh, that, that'll, will do pretty much what, what I did last year in the Zoom meeting. I'll highlight, go through and highlight everything, but this gives you some time to look at. You've got the details in the second part of the budget, uh, the ad valorem, you've also got that in there. Our property values went up six, six point oh three percent, I believe it was, for this year. Uh, so, all of that's in there. There, as I said, there, there are a couple of things in there you're gonna see, like in the stormwater, this, I put thirty thousand dollars in there for this house built. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. Uh, the sheriff's number, that's another discussion we're gonna have to have and settle this once and for all because if we're gonna save, we want our, our own deputy, it's gonna cost us about sixty thousand dollars more than it currently costs us with the increase for next year. Cause they're, they're getting a three point six and I put that in your packet also. So, that's all I have, unless you have something for me?
Questions for city manager? City coun, uh, city residents? Okay, thank you. Next we come to the city clerk, okay? Nothing? Questions for city clerk? Citizens? City council comments? You start this month with Robinaki.
Um, no major comments. I just, um, I wanna thank Fred because we've thrown a lot at you this meeting and you have a lot of homework to do. So, thank you for everything you do. I greatly appreciate it. I agree completely with, uh, Mayor Manzo that you are the man for this job and you are perfect for it despite all of our best efforts to deter you, but thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Robin. Frank, back there?
Let's go home.
Let's go home, okay? Um, Wenda?
Two things, uh, when the code review committee reported out, they, they kind of tweeted on us, said, council, you need to prioritize what code enforcement needs to be looking at. I sat down with Lynn Reeves, I sat down with Laura Van Duyen and crunched some of the numbers. We went back a year, made twenty twenty through April, twenty twenty-one. And we focused primarily on the call in complaints because assumptions made that if a person is wounded, they could call in if they're and concerned about it and that's a priority here at least. So what we find, the, uh, the number one call in complaint, survey says landscaping. Yes, you do need to meet police, trousers, okay? Forty-two percent of all the call ins are based on landscaping. And the, the next three categories, which comprises eighty percent of all the call ins, the next float, the next one was trash, but it was only sixteen percent. Parking, fifteen percent, construction, thirteen percent, followed by dogs and fur. That the number one contender is definitely landscaping. Last issue, I've been thinking about the, uh, the traffic congestion issue here and I want to just make a short pitch and, uh, you know, you can say your groans and the eye roll and everything a little bit, but I'm gonna pitch something that I've never heard a discussion about and that's about a roundabout. Just like up in that Clearwater Beach there. And if you're willing to take some time and do a little research, there's, there's some information out there on the web. If you even put it into, uh, YouTube, there's some two-minute, four-minute presentations. The, uh, the National Highway Transportation people, they're, they're really pushing it. A lot of states are converting a lot of the four-way stop intersections to roundabouts because here's what they're finding. They're finding, let me just, the cookbook stuff. The footprint typically fits within the normal right way of a, of a intersection there. Uh, and they are more efficient regardless of what your initial impression is or a roundabout, you know, the traffic moves slower. Yeah, the traffic moves slower, but it's continuously moving. People are entering and, uh, because of the slower speed, even if you have an accident, because of the angle that which, uh, the cars are moving, it's a deflected angle and you have less fatalities and less injuries. They are typically get twenty to fifty percent more flow to a roundabout their four-way stop intersection. They're greener, you can do things in the center of these things aesthetically, uh, they're, they're much greener. And also, when you talk about, uh, there's no weight, you don't have cars idling at stoplights burning gas. So they're much more fuel efficient when you're talking about the environment. I talked about the safety of these things. A lot of people roll their eyes about, oh yeah, roundabout or whatever, but what they find is after they install these things, despite all the pushback and controversy about it initially, after people start using the darn things, the acceptance level goes through the roof. So it may be, uh, something we want to discuss or pitch at the, uh, the county and say, hey, you know, it makes sense. Clearwater Beach is using it and, you know, I've never sat there for any length of time, you know, the traffic's always moving and you don't see long lines waiting at that roundabout, traffic's always moving. So maybe it's something we should, uh, pitch to the county and consider. That's all I have, thank you.
That's New Terra.
I agree with Frank. I'm, um,
Hey, you as well?
Uh, yes, I wanted to bring up a concern from one of the neighbors on Thirteenth Street. Um, and he has stressed that many people on Thirteenth Street as well as Twelfth Street would prefer Doc to have that island removed when we're discussing all of these different traffic issues and everything. It really helps them get out from, um, their street with that island there. So they're just wanting me to bring that up during the city council meeting and ask that we not consider that. So I just wanted to throw that out. Otherwise, I don't have anything else at this time.
Thank you. Dave Gaddis?
Uh, nothing for tonight.
I just have two items. Um, on May twelfth, we were, uh, the guests of the sheriff at the Fallen Officer Memorial. They honored the, uh, Deputy Magley's family was there, that was the officer, that was first officer that was killed in one hundred years. It was an extremely moving sitter home and Jim and I were privileged to be there. Met a lot of, uh, a lot of the politicians, but more importantly, we paid our respects to the brave men and women that gave their lives, uh, in our defense here for this, uh, for this county. It's a very sad ceremony, but, um, it's a very moving ceremony. If you ever have a chance to go to it, I'd highly recommend it. And secondly, um, I, I had the privilege of addressing the mayor's council, Pinellas County, as a executive board member on the, um, emergency management services, uh, committee. And, um, the purpose was to discuss the CAD system, which is the computer assisted dispatch system. I'm not gonna go through it, it's a half an hour thing, but we've got about seven or eight different systems in Pinellas County right now that have been installed over the years. And they don't perfectly sync well together. Um, there's a lot of patches that are put together to make them work. And right now, most of them are at the end of their useful life. So what we're doing is, um, trying to get one system that police, fire, ambulance, everyone would be able to utilize. That was a, uh, recommendation of the executive board, mayor's council. And I had, I asked if I can make a presentation for the mayor's council. We were trying to get support from, uh, cus, uh, from, uh, councilman, uh, councilman Gus Villarocas. There may be some money in twenty twenty-two. We're looking at about an eight to ten million dollar project here and there might be about two million dollars available. So we made, I made a presentation, I'm pleased to report that twenty-four mayors signed on, every single mayor in the county signed on. And we gave, uh, the congressman a letter of sign by twenty-four of us asking for that money, which had a lot more effect than having four of us on the, or five of us on the executive board asking for it. So, um, I'll keep you advised as to how that's going. I'm hoping that that system will move forward. It's something we've been talking about for a couple of years now. Um, that's all I have on, uh, tonight. And with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
So good.
And a second? And all in favor? All right, no one's opposed. Good night, everyone.